We all wear masks, so. It's good to see everybody back. To Ina. Today, as we start this session, as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves the decision process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be good for the city. We also pray for your blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia. Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
As nine present.
Thank you. I believe we have a moment of silence, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a moment of silence in the darkened chamber for Dr. Sabat Kao. He passed peacefully at age 78 on September 20, 2000, in his home. He was married to Sokhav Bong for 30 years. Dr. Kao came to the U.S. in February 1981 and became U.S. citizen in 1986. He graduated from Dentistry College in Cambodia and also continued on at University Washington at St. Louis. He was a pioneer to his own clinic in Lowell on Wood Street. He was a member of Massachusetts American Dentist Society and American Dental Association. He was president and board member of Triratanaram Tham Po. Dr. Kao was a member of Cambodia Parliamentary, where he was part of Cambodian National Rescue Party, in short, CNRP. Besides his wife, Dr. Kao is survived by eight children. Daned Kao, Davin Kao, Nolyn Kao, Nisai Kao, Vanak Kao, Panet Kao, Vijet Kao, and Bishairin. He has 10 grandchildren, many nieces and nephews. Just want to add also that Dr. Kao was a role model for us, for me, young people, me, and the former City Councilor, Reti Ong, and many others. He devoted hours of his time to advise us, guide us, so may he rest in peace.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott.
I just wanted to say a couple of words. Counselor Noon knew Sabat Kao better than anyone, but as a mayor, I did come to meet Sabat Kao and in a very short time realized his standing in the community, his commitment to helping refugees coming over for decades, and his individual ability to overcome the genocide and so many things in his native land, only to come here and graduate with a doctor of medical dentistry. An amazing man, very quiet man. But the respect that he commanded through every member of the community is really remarkable, and his contributions to the city and his community really are well-founded. So I just wanted to, to his family, to his friends, to his wife Sokhav Bong. She's just an amazing woman. So he'll be sorely missed in the community and just wanted to state my admiration to him as a member of Parliament, his commitment to democracy, and his love for his country, both Cambodia and the United States. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If there's no objection, I have one from the chair. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Patrick Henry Burgon, 32, passed away September 6, 2020 after a courageous battle with colon cancer. He was a graduate of Thayer Academy, Providence College, and also served in the Marine Corps from 2013 to 2019. Patrick is survived by his wife Amanda Flood and their son Noah Patrick. His parents, George and Kathleen Burgon. His in-laws, Charles and Rosalind Flood. Rosalind is employed by the Lowell School Department and their sister Reagan Flood works down the assessors' offices in City Hall. He'll be sadly missed. If we can dim the lights. Thank you. Under Mayor's business, communication that we have Zoom participation, need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Mercia. Also, presentation of National Small Business Week. I have a citation, just a few notes. Small businesses are essential to Massachusetts economy. Massachusetts small businesses compromise of 99.5% of all businesses in the state. These small businesses employ 1.5 million people, about 46% of Massachusetts employees, and creates 35,232 jobs in 2019. As of June 30, small business revenue in Massachusetts decreased by about 36% compared to January 2020. According to a recent survey by the Main Street America, 7.5 million small businesses nationally could permanently close. Small businesses are the backbone of our economy here in Lowell. We encourage everyone to shop local, eat local, buy local, keep your dollars in Lowell. Small Business Week is going to look a little different this year. Mayor's office and the Economic Development Office will be visiting businesses directly and highlighting how resilient our small business community is here in Lowell. I am proud to announce that Lowell-based Small Business Specialty Materials was the recipient of the Small Business Administration subcontractor was the recipient of the Small Business Administrators subcontractor of the Year. Specialty Materials is on Middlesex Street here in Lowell, a firm specializing composite fiber, pre-pegged products, and support our aerospace industry. Monica Romo, CEO of Specialty Materials, purchased her business in 2019, and Specialty Materials is the only remaining source of continuous boron fiber in the world. We're proud to support and celebrate this woman-owned small business here in Lowell. And I have a citation I'll read for Small Business Week. City of Lowell, Conwell, Massachusetts, by his honor, John Leahy, Mayor, proclamation. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. From the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of the nation's promise. Small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and passion for what they do. And whereas when we support small businesses, jobs are created. Local communities preserve their unique culture. Because the country's 30 million small businesses create nearly two out of three net new jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur the economy growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneur. The President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight these programs and services available to entrepreneurs throughout the U.S., small business administrators, and other government agencies. And whereas Lowell supports and joins the nation in effort to help America's small businesses do their best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure that the communities remain vibrant for tomorrow as they are today. Now, therefore, I, John J. Leahy, Mayor of City Lowell, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim Monday, September 21 through Friday, September 25, 2020, as National Small Business Week in the City of Lowell and urge all residents to get out and support your local small businesses this week, given this 22nd day of September 2020 by myself and the entire City Council. So not be 7 o'clock yet. We'll go to motion responses. Oh, yeah, yeah. City Clerk. Minutes of the City Council meeting September 8 for acceptance. Need a motion by Counselor Samaras, second by Counselor Noon to be placed on file. Communication, yep, communications from the manager. Motion response A, Gallagher Square repainting, Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Madam Manager and Diane Trad for responding to this motion immediately. And it's a good response, and the paintings and the markings in that area will be done. I spoke with a couple of residents that were of interest to this motion, and they're very thankful to the City Manager's office for responding on time and matter. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Mercia.
Yes, I don't know if Diane Trad is available or someone Natasha.
Natasha is, should be available on Zoom.
I just have a question because the area that Counselor Chow was talking about, Thondike Street at the intersection of YMCA Drive, some time ago, maybe last year, all the lights were out because of construction. I haven't been there at night, so I don't know. Are they working? Does anybody know?
I think they did get those repaired. I thought National Grid was out there fixing those lights. Does Natasha have to be let into the meeting or?
I'm pretty sure that was done because that was like a two-year project, and they finally got together.
She's available.
Oh, here she is.
There we go.
We can hear you.
Oh, you didn't hear me? Shall I say it again?
Oh, okay. No, I heard you, Counselor Mercia.
Oh, you heard me.
It was my understanding that those lights were repaired. Christine Clancy is also on the call, and she may have more information on that. But it was a National Grid issue, and I believe they fixed it.
So it was a National Grid issue, and you believe it's done?
Yeah, we can check with Christine Clancy, who's also listening.
I feel embarrassed because I should have been there to look, but I'm not out in the dark like that. And that's, you know, so I'm sorry.
But they were out for some time.
And they were.
And it was quite dark. But I believe that they, that National Grid, they did say they were going to address it, and I believe they did. But we'll follow up with Christine.
I couldn't leave here tonight and go home that way, just to see, but, so, thank you.
Thank you. Natasha, if you can stay on, I think you have the next one too, in case there are questions.
Your motion response B, four-way stop at Wilder and Shaw. Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to thank Madam Manager and Diane Trad and Natasha Vance for making this, making public safety a priority. This motion was only put on the last meeting, and we have the response right away. The Engineering Department went to survey the area and, you know, found this area is a heavily densely populated area. So the streets are small and a lot of vehicles. So when the vehicles park on the side, you have visibility issue, as you mentioned, and report. And you discovered that there are crashes there in the past couple of years. Having this to slow vehicle down or to have law enforcement in the form of four-way stop signs is very important. When this motion was made a couple of days later, you know, there were shootings in that area. And unrelated, I think, only a few days ago, there was a vehicle that went through the stop sign, a traffic violation. The Lowell Police stopped that vehicle and discovered that there was a gun discovered. So this type of safety signals, you know, because when somebody have the intention to commit crimes, their mind, the frame of mind is not altogether. So they tend to make mistake, and one of the things that many police officers discover, like crimes about to happen, is through traffic violation. So, you know, having this four-way stop sign in that area is both for the safety of vehicle, preventing crash, or for pedestrians, but also to prevent, hopefully, when people have the intention to commit crimes, they would commit this type of traffic violation, and we would discover in advance. My only question for this motion is that at the bottom, it says it's going to be added to the next 60-day trial process. What does that mean, the 60-day trial?
Natasha, if you can answer, I don't know if you can hear it well.
Sure. Yes, yeah, Counselor Noon, we, to add a stop sign, we have to add a traffic ordinance. And the way that we modify traffic ordinances in the city is through the 60-day trial process. So we've already, we've already prepared the memo, and so the transportation staff prepares a memo explaining that we're going to add a stop ordinance at that location, and it'll go to Engineering and Law and then be on the City Council agenda at the next meeting, which is, I'm not sure when it is, sometime in October?
It's actually three weeks.
Maybe October 13? Okay, the 13th. Yeah, and then once the, once Counsel approves the 60-day trials, then it goes to the Sign Department, and they usually put the sign up within a week or so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
That is all, thank you.
Well, I don't have a question, but I do know that Natasha is leaving us, so it's really sad. I know I'm happy for you, but before the next meeting, in case we don't see you, we want to thank you for all you've done for Lowell. Congratulations.
Thank you, Counsel. I was going to mention that Natasha's done a great job for us. She's been recruited by the MBTA and promoted, and we wish her good luck. But you've done a great job for us. She might be here again tonight on a later item, but it all depends on you if you have a question. But best of luck to you, Natasha.
I just wanted to say thank you so much to, I'm actually a little choked up, I'm surprised. Just thank you so much to the City Council and to the City Manager and everybody at the city. I really, really loved working here and really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. She, we've had, we had a number of traffic engineers, and to me, it's one of the most challenging positions in the City of Lowell. And because, because traffic is one of the most challenging. And I have to tell you, with professionalism and patience and thoroughness, I think Natasha, she did such a commendable job, it really is going to be a loss. She had great energy, she went to great lengths to go to locations when we would file motions and spent time, I can tell you, she has spoken to neighbors, she has followed, made follow-up phone calls, and it's a thankless job. But I think she did yeoman's work, yeoman's work with the effort. And I just want to thank her and congratulate her. It looks like she likes to take on a challenge first, coming to the City Hall and then going to the MBTA. So I do wish you well, Natasha, and thanks for your dedication, your professionalism, and commitment to easing traffic woes in the city.
Thank you. Being 7 o'clock, we'll jump into the ordinances, public hearings. So first public hearing of the night is 4:01, vote appropriation order, FY 2021 budget. So looking at the bottom line of 281,556,022. So open the meeting to all those in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anyone opposed? Anyone in opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. So I need a motion to adopt, and then we'll open the questions. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's no objection, I'd like to bring in a finance subcommittee report. Meeting was held this evening at 5:30 p.m. There's no objection?
No, no objection.
So specifically, the only item on the agenda was the FY 21 budget. In attendance were you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Mercia, Counselor Rourke, Counselor Rourke, Counselor Chow, Counselor Drinkwater, of course, members of the subcommittee, Counselor Noon, Counselor Conway. We had the city auditor, Chief Financial Officer, City Manager, as well as the business manager for the school department at this meeting. The presentation was made by Mr. Baldwin. Perhaps he would, can go through a brief recap of the, of this year's total operating budget of $439,272,583. I think, you know, some of the highlights, certainly revenue was a concern. We took a reduction from the state on the city side of about $750,000. And on the school side, close to $13 million from the original estimate. We had meetings, we've been having regular meetings, but even back to February 11, I had the presentation, and those numbers that we had anticipated certainly were removed from the table, and we're not going to receive those fundings, funding. That being said, administration, just to recap, I'd like to say over the last several months and even back to the prior last quarter of FY 20, a number of measures have been put in place and continue to be in place. Hiring only necessary positions, and as a result, there's a net savings of $560,000 of positions that are not going to be in this budget as a result of cutbacks, as well as, you know, making prudent decisions on what we can afford. Excuse me, FY 21 budget does avoid layoffs, but there are positions that have been unfunded. Certainly, the cherry cheat charges are the biggest, one of the biggest problems we have in this year's budget. And there were a motion that was made to move this forward. This has been an ongoing problem with charter school reimbursement. The total cost to the taxpayers, the taxpayers in this city now this year for charter school reimbursement is $30 million. The reimbursement from the state is 3.9 million. This is public education. So the City of Lowell, the taxpayers, we are funding 26, almost $27 million for the charter school reimbursement. Just a reminder to the people at home that are watching, the city has in the past sent a Home Rule petition down to increase the reimbursement to cities like Lowell, that we cannot, this is not sustainable. We, we hold a line on spending. We try to look for many ways to raise revenue. And lo and behold, this year, there's a $5 million increase in charter school costs. So the motion that came from the Finance Subcommittee on this particular issue that passed unanimously was to request the City Manager or to the Law Department to request an opinion on what options we have available to limit the expansion because each year, one charter school, another grade is added. You know, my understanding through you, through the City Manager, is that this agreement already has been in place, but $5 million increases, and this is local tax dollars. This is not state, state funding that we have to pay for. So it's public education, it should be funded accordingly. So the motion was have the Law Department request an opinion regarding limiting further expansion of charter school grades. Any options that we have to increase state reimbursement in accordance with the Chapter 70 formula? I think that, I think that encapsulates what we're trying to get to, that there is a formula that the city uses for public education, for our students and enrollment. And to me, it should be, it should be the same. So moving on, that is one motion. So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to take this, there is one more motion. There is one more motion. That will be forthcoming, but I don't know if we want to perhaps take a vote on this one? Okay, so that's the motion.
Okay. So you have no motion to approve by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Mercy. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then need a motion to accept the report of progress?
Yeah, a little bit more, Mr. Mayor. So that's one of the big factors that's impacting our budget this year. So the second issue, the, the second item is the solid waste, is the trash removal in the city. We've seen it, $2 million increase just from last year to this year. $750,000 of that are fees as a result of contaminated recycling. I believe the city manager is going to be coming forward with a presentation regards solid waste and the impact. But the problem with that is that these, the contamination and those fees and the $2 million that's in excess of the revenue that comes in, that's going on the tax rate. So we're not doing a good job recycling. Some of it, you know, some of the problem is the recycling market has dropped off. So some things that are, once were recyclable and there was a market and we could have it taken away for free or we would even make some money in years past. That's not the case anymore. So I don't know what direction we're heading into, Madam Manager. It's now starting to cost more money to pick up recycling on a bi-weekly basis, and we're not making any money on it. So it's become a real liability. I'm not sure what other communities are doing, but it's a real cost. It's going on the tax rate and we're not going in a good direction. I don't know, you have an audit coming, Madam Manager, not, not tonight, but forthcoming?
There's, there's a report on tonight, but there is, the next audit, I believe, is in two weeks. And so we wanted to bring the report from the last audit forward and then alert people that there's going to be another audit. And so please, please recycle appropriately, because it does cost everybody money.
Okay, well, we'll say that, those questions for the report, because I think when it comes to contamination, what's recyclable, what's not recyclable, what's contributing to these exorbitant fees? And how can we, you know, how can we minimize it? Because it's just, it's money coming right out of, right out of our pocket. So moving forward, other aspects that were discussed. We talked about local aid, and local aid are at level funded from last fiscal year, which is unfortunate, because there are costs that are built into, that are factored into this budget, anticipating increases like collective bargaining agreements, cost of living increase, other fixed costs, healthcare, debt service. All these are, you know, have an impact where we plan, we plan accordingly. And then on certain levels of funding in this year, as a result of the impact of COVID on the state budget, revenues are going to be less. So I'll try to wrap up this, this report moving forward. This budget also includes using rainy day funds. At the end of last quarter, when we closed out June 30th, the city had, we had reserves of $7.5 million in unrestricted free cash. We also had $10 million of undesignated fund balance. There was $12 million in our stabilization fund, close to $30 million. And the city was, was prudent when we, during the good times, we took excess revenues and we, we certainly applied them to pay down, pay down things like snow and ice and other ancillary costs that come up, unexpected emergency costs. However, we also put money in our rainy day funds. And, and that's a good sign. That's good, it shows good fiscal strength. You know, prior to COVID, the city was, we had great fiscal strength, quite frankly. And unfortunately, times have changed. So with that, this budget includes $3.5 million in rainy day funds. So it's, it's a rainy day fund, in my opinion, as I mentioned at the other, at the finance subcommittee, it's raining. And as much as we don't want to use these, now's the time where we have to provide stability. We can't just raise taxes, you know, to such exorbitant amounts. So we're using $3.5 million in our, from our free cash funds. That will still leave us savings, stability of, you know, 26 million. So it's not going to jeopardize our, our bond status. We're still going to be in good fiscal shape, but we're just trying to plan accordingly for any unexpected changes in revenue. So that's a report of the finance subcommittee. There will be an increase in the levy in order to, to keep basic city government services. There are no new, new positions in this job. In fact, there, as I mentioned, there's close to $600,000 less. So we've, we've held the line on spending. And the, the only other motion that came forward from the finance subcommittee, we, there was a request that was made by the finance subcommittee to meet jointly with the school committee. We have not received the school committee budget yet. We did have the finance director from the school department attend. As a result of the change in local aid, they had essentially a $12.7 million deficit. They had built the budget based upon funding from the CARES Act, which did not come through. So the city allotted our, we still exceeded our net school spending figure. I may go to you, Madam Manager, on just that. We didn't get to spend too much time on, on the school department. But there will be a joint, a joint meeting. I suggested next Tuesday, that is actually the day that there'll be a hearing on the budget. But the request was to have the budget sent to all members of the city council. It is in draft form, but it has been advertised, so. But they, there was an additional 3.9 million received for specifically Chapter 70 funds for escalation costs, inflation costs. There also was a, the school department also received the $4.7 million ESAR grant, which is CARES money to offset things like health insurance costs, who was unrestricted. They do have contractual obligations of 5.4 million. But they also received grants of 3.2 million to reopening costs for, for PPE. Another 1.7 million for COVID technical assistance. And, and, yeah, so those, those are the figures from the school department. And I don't know if my subcommittee members have any other items that I may have missed. I appreciate the information. This is the budget before us. I just want to, as I did and all members of my colleagues did. Again, this is, it's a very informative budget, Madam Manager. And Mr. Baldwin supersedes last year's effort. Any answers, any questions that anyone, or certainly I had, are included in here. We've had a number of meetings. We've been meeting regularly over the course of the last several months. We've adopted 1/12 budgets for the last three months. And now, as October 1st, we have to adopt a full-year budget. So that's a report from the finance subcommittee. I would turn to you, Madam Manager, to fill any gaps. You know, it's a $439 million budget. I think you and your team, over the last number of months since the whole COVID crisis has hit and the impact on revenue and challenges that you have faced, I do feel that you and the finance team have done an admirable job in keeping the city finances stable, keeping city operations moving forward, sometimes remotely with very difficult circumstances. But I'm going to support this budget. You answered many questions that I had in the finance subcommittee, so. I'll turn it over to you if there's anything else.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council.
Madam Manager, can we just, yeah, we're gonna, can we just accept the report of progress and the report of motion from the subcommittee and adopt the motions that were presented? So motion by Council Mercy, seconded by Council Noon. Madam Manager?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. This has, this is the third budget that my administration has presented. It's certainly the most difficult budget, I think, that we've had in a good long time, given the COVID condition. And, and, and we all know that once the pandemic hit, it has affected everybody. There isn't a human being that has not been impacted. There isn't an organization or an entity or a municipality. Everybody is in this, and so we know that. I just wanted to comment, you know, the picture that my office voted on for the cover is the new, the new bridge in the Hamilton Canal. And it was intended to be, and that's, that's the garage, the new garage that we have on the left-hand side. And the historic wall on the right-hand side. And the idea is bridging the, the new to the old or the old to the new, whichever way you want to phrase it. But we certainly look forward to new and we look forward to a new year once this is all behind us. But right now, we have a very challenge, challenging time that we're in and we're, we need to manage through it. You did a great recap, Mr. Chairman, on, on what was presented and very thorough report from the subcommittee. I will turn it over to Mr. Baldwin in a minute to give a brief presentation for those who maybe didn't see the presentation earlier this evening. But I do want to take a moment and commend, first, the finance team. As I said, this has been a tough year. This isn't a budget. This is the second or the third or the fourth time this budget had to be prepared. It was never certain. We didn't have certain numbers from the state as far as the foundation. And, and so we had to look at so many different scenarios. So Connor Baldwin and Allison Chambers deserve a lot of credit for a lot of hard work from January all the way through. It's been a non-stop labor. I want to credit the department heads and our employees, our union employees and our non-union employees. As we have discussed, we are working very closely with them as we speak around concessions. And they've been very cooperative to try and make sure we close the gap in this fiscal year without layoffs. And so I need to commend them for their commitment to the city of Lowell. And stay tuned, we'll report more in the future on that to, you know, hopefully, we can bring some, some materials before you. But the, as you said, we are, you know, when some people hear this is, the state is funding us at FY 20 levels, well, that still leaves us with a $6 million, nearly $6 million gap that we have to fill because of fixed costs, as you mentioned. In addition to that, the, the $750,000 that was promised that we're not getting. In addition to that, the increased money from the Student Opportunity Act that was going to help offset some of those charter school costs, another loss of $3 million that we should have gotten, that we're not getting. In addition to that, our own lost local revenues because of everybody being so hard-hit, meals tax, hotels tax, you know, so many other of our local taxes. So all of that combined presents a really challenging year. So what you have in front of you is a balanced budget. It is going to require a lot of time and attention throughout the year as we watch what's happening. You know, any budget is a forecast, and we need to make sure we keep our eyes on the, on the forecast in the news every single day as we manage this, through our, through this budget. So with that said, I'd turn this over to Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Madam Manager. And I, I think between the Council Elliot's comments from the finance subcommittee and yours, Madam Manager, we covered a lot of the major challenges and, and highlights. We gave a presentation at, at the subcommittee, and I won't, I won't go through the entire thing again. But I just want to highlight some of the, the major points relative to the budget. I think that it's important to remember that we came to this budget. And when the governor released his version of the state budget back in January, the city was in incredible period of fiscal strength. And some of the numbers were cited. But that undesigned fund balance for the city of over $10 million is incredibly significant. And, you know, over the years that, that I've been here, that number has gone anywhere from $4 to $5 million. And it really is a mark of the city's available balance. For times like these, when revenues start to become difficult or our aid appears like there may be a cut at the state level that we may be able to draw upon it. And it's only because of the fiscal strength and the policies that the city council has put in place that we're going to be well adept to deal with these challenges moving forward. So there's a lot that could be talked about as it relates to the budget. If it weren't for COVID-19, I think that we would be in a position to address some of the more significant challenges financially as it's either the OPEB liability or our pension liability, that it's likely we will be unable to make more progress than what the council's been able to make at this point. And we're going to have to turn our attention more to the daily activities, the dollars and cents, and making ends meet by tightening our belts. And that's the, the general theme of the 2021 budget. So some of the numbers behind that, you know, our fixed costs, whether it's the pension assessment, the debt service related to the city's aggressive capital program, paving streets and sidewalks, all of the activity that you see out there in the community and the debt service associated with it, or the contaminated recycling. All of those costs are still real costs that must be absorbed within the budget. So despite the, the challenges in, in revenues and receipts drying up on the local receipt, and we still have to meet those financial challenges. And that's where the position that we had to look at the three-quarter budget as, as we're referring to it. So I want to applaud the city council for approaching this in the most conservative way. And not all communities took the same approach towards the 2021 budget. This city council, in May, we met with the, the schools in a joint finance subcommittee and made the decision right then that we were going to try to put ourselves in the best position to deal with 2021. And to do that was to take advantage of the provision under the law, to pass a continuing resolution, essentially a 3/1/12 budgets, to put us in the best position so when we get here to October, that we have the best plan we can put forward to fund government through June 30th. And I think that's the position we're in. And while we, we have a plan before the council, it's, it's going to take constant monitoring of expenditures, of revenues, and we will likely be back before the council, before the subcommittee with, with additional information as we move through the year. So the charter schools are one of the major challenges that was discussed at length in the subcommittee. And that is a pretty significant loss that we took from the, the scaling back of the Student Opportunity Act. I did want to take a moment to discuss some of the financial impact of coronavirus on the budget. We do have in the budget plan, one-third of the three-year plan to pay back what we estimated would be the, the cost of dealing with COVID-19. And under some of the special legislation that was passed, much like in 2015 with the major snowstorms that the city hit, the legislature gave municipalities the option to present the state with an estimate of costs for approval that could be amortized over three years. The city submitted an estimate of approximately $600,000 between public safety costs, public health costs, tracing in the public health department, et cetera, et cetera. And this budget includes a $200,000 first-year payment on that three-year payment plan. So we're doing the right thing. We've built it into the budget and we will pay that back over three years. And that, that is really one of the, the significant points in the budget that we have included all of our costs and have met our revenue estimates. Despite these challenges, we have done our best to limit the impact on taxes, and we recommend approval of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Take questions, Council Conway?
Yeah, I'd just like to just say a few words. I think that this budget is a perfect example of good management and being frugal. And what's the result? The result is the city being in, I think, good financial situation. And, you know, that just doesn't happen by chance. We're talking about a city- We're talking about a city manager, and I applaud you, Madam Manager, and your team, Connor Baldwin, with all the hard work. And I know that there's a tremendous amount of time that was put on this to make sure that, that the city would be in, in, in good working order, and that we would have our services still be available. You know, when you take a look about the, the challenges that COVID-19 had, which it, you know, which you point out in the, in the report, it, it's a negative effect on, on every part of, in every aspect of life, not just here in the city, but the state, country, and the, and the entire world. So I think it needs some forward thinking to make sure that we could, we could steady the ship and navigate through some very, very difficult times. And I think that, I think that this team actually did do that, and I think they did an excellent job. And yet, I believe that the essential services are being, are being kept and intact, like, for example, the police department does a great job, and the fire department, and, and other services. And all this, combined with the fact that there's no increases in the taxes. So, you know, I, I think that it's important that, you know, that we point out the fact that the city manager and her team, and I applaud them for this, because of being involved with the school department for so many years, and seeing the buildings neglected. And it's the first time I can remember in many years that a city manager has made a commitment and reached out with her team to acquire additional monies, and to help with these poorly maintained school buildings through the accelerated repair program. And that, if I recall, was somewhere in the vicinity last year, about 13, 13 and a half, $13.6 million. That's incredible. You know, I, and, and that, and I remember asking the question, is this, is this program new? And no, it's been around a long time, and, you know, shame on us for, for not going after this money in, in the past. You know, and what was the money used for? For roofs, I believe, for heating systems, I think doors, windows, and so forth. These are things that, that certainly could help, help our schools out, and which, again, I applaud you, and it's my understanding that you're going to be doing that year after year, trying to acquire additional monies. So again, for, going forward, I think that what's been pointed out, I believe, by Connor Baldwin and the city managers, that, you know, we have to continue on that, on that road of being frugal with the monies, and being very watchful. And you people have done that, and, again, I, I applaud my colleagues here. You know, it's a good group of, of individuals that I think were very, very cognizant of the fact that we were in some difficult times, and, and I think they combine forces as a council to, to work, truly at work as a team. And I, and I think that, I think they certainly need to be applauded for that. So again, not to continue on, but the fact is that, you know, you guys did a great job, and I think that people need to know that you're working hard for them to make sure that the city is a successful city going forward. So again, thank you very much, Madam Manager, and Connor Baldwin, and, and the team. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Elliot?
Thank you. I just wanted to, the, the auditor is, is part of the team, and she attended the finance subcommittee. We didn't get time to, to get to you, but just a report on the fiscal status of, of the operations of the auditor's office, please.
Sure, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So far, we're on track with spending. There's been no overages, but to Mr. Baldwin's point, it has only been a 1/12 appropriation for July through September, and now that, you know, hopefully with this vote that we have the rest of the year going through, all the departments have been really great. They've really curbed their spending, and, and all their expenses and payroll that they've been submitting has been, I guess, to use your words, or Counsel Conway's words, a frugal. They've really reined in, and you can see that to date, where our budget to actual is actually at a really good place. And I think if we keep this trend, we'll be in a really, in an even better place come the fiscal year end, combined with the, you know, all the policies and procedures that were put in place, excuse me, specifically on things like overtime or COVID expenses, amortizing the deficit in the spending, it really helped put us in a good spot. Our office has really ramped up expenditure audit and payroll audit, and making sure that the, the expenses are substantive and in line with the goal and mission of the city. So I, I think so far, so good. That's just my professional opinion, but I can get actual figures at the next meeting if required.
Okay, good. No, I, I think that's what we wanted to hear, because I know probably finance subcommittee meetings of a manager indicated that you have these weekly, or bi-weekly, or regular meetings with your finance team, and part of that team was going to be the, the school manager. So I hope that continues. That was a commitment that we made prior to, you know, the fiscal challenge that was presented, both on the city side and, and school side. So I do hope that continues, because I do feel it is important, it is productive, and we can address any shortcomings or any issues and nip them in the bud before they become, you know, a, a big problem. So it's good to, it's good to hear. That's why I wanted to come to you, Madam Auditor. You, you work for the council, and, and it's, it's, it's a good relationship, but it's good to have that check and balance, that budgets are being expended in accordance with what we appropriate, and the, you know, the manager and the finance office are monitoring it. And I do think moving forward, we're still in for some challenges, and monitoring and still continue to look for savings is only going to benefit when we go to set the tax rate in November, and I'm hopeful that other revenue will come in and that we can put against that, that tax rate when we go to set it. So we'll be looking at the overlay account, Connor, and the assessors' office, and, you know, looking, looking for significant savings that we can reduce that levy amount. So through you, see the Madam.
Madam Manager.
I just wanted to add that the auditor's done a great job. She's very tough. She's a good auditor. She, she puts our feet to the fire all the time. So she's doing her job, but she's tough, but, but she's doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions on the budget? Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a fair and reasonable budget, certainly. The city is not unique, though. Low, there's so many other cities in town impacted financially by this COVID-19. Giving those challenges that was brought up by the managers and the CFO, Connors, you know, we are up with this budget. This budget, actually, while we're with this budget, we still continue to invest on program and initiative that Madam Manager mentioned, and as well as be reasonable to all the department head, and I hope that, that stays foot in terms of avoiding layoffs. And I hope that we continue to do that, making sure that we avoid layoffs with this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. No, I think, we just want to say thank you for a well-done budget. It's easy, one thing about it, it's easy to follow, and it, it is complete. One of the things, I think, Mr. Conway talked about it, but both of us being in education, it's an area that I went to, and one of the parts is, in your letter to the city council, and you talked about meeting that school spending, which is very important to the school department, especially at this time. But there's a line I think the citizens should know, because there's been so much discussion as to, as a city council, what are we doing about the school buildings? Parents, teachers, they all have concerns. And you truly have reached out, but I think this line, it, it so stands out at the end. Despite the fact that the debt service associated with these capital repairs cannot be credited towards net school spending requirements, it must be absorbed by the city's operational budget. This council has made abundantly clear that the focus of capital funding must be directed towards the maintenance and upkeep of school facilities. This is a long time coming to see this actually, you know, in, in word form in our budget, and I want to thank you for that, commend you for that, because it's, it's, it's important, and it's, it's something that the entire community is concerned about. And these are the hottest times, I think, in many, many years. I mean, I remember facing Proposition 2 and 1/2 when it first came in. Those were like emergencies, there were shortfalls in monies, but this is really an emergency situation. And the way people have handled all of these, but it's still, at the same time, keeping our eye on the ball, and one of them is to ensure that the quality of the buildings for our students. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Madam Manager. Madam Manager, can you speak to the cooperation that you and your team has had with the various city unions in regards to the budget?
Thank you. So I can't get into detail, because it is all part of collective bargaining, but I do want to say that we have been at the table discussing this issue, trying to reach some accord so that we can save jobs, and there's, there is definitely, I think, a unified spirit around doing that, and we're making great progress.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
Okay. Just one more speaker. Counsel Drinkwater. Motion by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be brief, because it's tough to say anything too original at this point, but I do feel it's important, just to emphasize, I believe, what a good balance that this, this budget represents. In a very, very difficult time, I think you look at this, and you see the balance between the levy increase, the use of reserves, finding cuts where it's possible, but also making great efforts to preserve jobs and services is just, you know, something to be commended. And I know the conversations are ongoing to make sure that we can preserve jobs throughout the year, and, and that's important, conversation that to happen. But the fact that we can here tonight move to approve a budget that does preserve the number of jobs and, and services, I think is something just to be noted. So thank you to you, Madam Manager, and to the, the finance team, CFO Connor Baldwin, Deputy Allison Chambers. I think this is a really impressive document. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Ahhee?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Thank you. 4-2, ordinance to amend fees, Chapter 150. Second reading, ordinance amending code of ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 150, therefore entitled "Fees by Amending Certain Sections." Open the hearing to all those in favor. All those in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open it up to all those in opposition. In opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Samaras. Counsel Elliot?
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to support this. I'm going to support the following motion under setting up a revolving fund. This is a $10 fee that we're going to assess to any contractor or, or company that are going to be required the use of a police cruiser as part of a detail. I, I like this idea that we're going to set up a revolving fund. I did ask the chief financial officer how much we spent on an annual basis for vehicles, and it's $250,000 line item, just for police vehicles. The vehicles naturally are more expensive, but this is a way to get some revenue back and not just every year looking, and to improve our fleet, quite frankly, when they're being used by contractors or road jobs or details. So I, I think this is a good idea. Any other revenue that we can, you put into this revolving fund to supplant the purchase of, of vehicles? I mean, we spend $100,000 a year on maintenance, as you know, Madam Manager. It's a lot. So again, I commend you for looking for ways to bring revenue in to offset these costs and the tax rate. So I'm going to support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great request by the deputy golden and chief. You know, look, we should have done this a long time ago, because when they do have the detail officers, we have some, sometimes we have cruisers there, and that gas is running out, and we're in here on a cruiser, who's going to get paid, who's going to end up taking that? It's the taxpayer. This is a great suggestion to allow the city to charge the vendor fee for the detail that requires usage of, you know, the police cruisers. It's like, it's like a, a, a fee for service, basically. So it's a great idea, and I think that we should, you know, this certainly is going to help pay for repair and maintenance, as Counsel Elliot indicated. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Counsel. Roll call? Oh, sorry, Madam Manager.
I just wanted to give credit where credit is due. This did come directly from the police department. It was the idea of, of the chief and his deputy golner. So, you know, it's, it is a great idea, and I just want to credit them for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Ahhee?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Thank you. 4-3, ordinance amend metered service water. Second reading, Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council ordinance, and ordinance amending the code of ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 272, Article 6272-86, entitled "Metered Service Water." Open up the hearing to anyone, all those in favor. All those in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anyone in opposition. Opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Rourke. Counsel Elliot?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I just want to reassure our seniors on this water and sewer that the discount is going to be, from what I can see, it's going to remain in effect, and it's, and it's 50% less if you're at 0 to 50, or 1,400 cubic feet. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Baldwin, or, or city manager, or I don't know if?
That's correct, Counsel.
Okay, so there's, there's no increase. This really, the increases are on the big users, as I can tell from this rate structure, those that are using over five, over 500, 100 cubic feet, 200 to 500, that's where the increases are. So I, I just want to make that, make that clear, that people that are using the, the majority of the water are going to see the increase.
Thank you. Roll call?
Can I just explain? Example, yeah, examples, I just want, I mean, people don't know what I'm talking about. It's, it's our larger, it's the university, it's the hospitals, it's, it's, you know, large industry that are using large volumes of water. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Ahhee?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
4-4, ordinance amend revolving fund, Chapter 28, S28331.1. Second reading, Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council ordinance, and ordinance amending the code of ordinances, City of Lowell, with respect to Chapter 28, Article 6, 28-31.1, entitled "Revolving Funds." All those in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open it up to anyone in opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Conway. Any questions? Roll call?
Mayor Ahie.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Roark.
Yes.
Counselor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Four-five, ordinance amend annual sewer use charge. Second reading, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City Lowell and City Council ordinance, the ordinance and ordinance amending the code of ordinances, City Lowell, Massachusetts with respect to Chapter 272, Article 6272-87, entitled Annual Sewer Use Charge. Open up the hearing to all those in favor? All those in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anyone in opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Samaras. Any questions? Roll call?
Mayor Ahie.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Roark.
Yes.
Counselor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
And four-six, Markley Group LLC requests to amend flammable materials license for additional 15,100 gallons of diesel fuel, too.
Mr. Mayor, I have some registered speakers here, so when you open in the favor, I'll let the one speaking in favor in, and same with the opposition.
All right. So I'll open up the meeting to all those in favor.
And I'll let the registered speakers in. Give me a second. Maybe if I... If Ron can hear me, I'm going to let you... I'm going to go Bill Tabor right here. William Tabor? Or George White? I don't know. He's connected now. It's just going to take a while. He's just not coming through.
He's in opposition.
All right. George White.
I'm Bill Tabor.
All right. Go.
Okay, Bill, are you all set?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay.
I can hear two. Basically, the proposal I'm working... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Bill.
I'm representing Markley. My name is Bill Tabor. I'm an engineer with Vanessa Hagan-Bresslin, and representing Markley Group for the installation of three diesel fuel tanks that total... Am I coming through?
Yes, you're all set. Keep... Continue. Yep.
I probably should turn off. I've got you on TV also.
Oh, sure. Turn that off.
Yeah, I've turned that off, so I can't hear that anymore. I can just hear you. Basically, what we're looking at is a total of 15,100 gallons added to the existing 40... Excuse me, 32,000 gallons that the facility has been approved for. The four existing tanks that have been approved are along the south end of the building. The three new ones are at the northeast corner of the building. The tanks themselves are single-wall steel inside dikes that are belly tanks below the generators. They meet all of the NFPA and State Fire Code requirements for diesel fuel tanks and have been reviewed by the Lowell Fire Department, and they're on board with us as far as that. They've reviewed them, they've approved them. If you have any particular questions regarding the tanks themselves, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tabor.
Is anybody else from his team's going to speak?
Anyone else from your team going to speak in favor?
If George is on...
Yep.
I'm on, but I have... Bill's... Anything I can answer questions, if you have any. Bill, be able to go through everything.
Sure, go ahead, George, if you want to speak in favor.
Nope, I have nothing to say outside of if you have a question that you want me to answer.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Counselor Elliott?
Mr. Mayor, has the owners of Markley met with the neighbors? I've known there've been some problems in the past with generators and diesel orders and...
You've got some opposition?
Oh, there's more people? Okay, sorry.
All right. So we'll close in favor. Anyone in opposition? We have speakers for that?
Yes, we do. Jake Fortes.
Hi there. Hopefully you guys can hear me. I know that there's audio issues with doing things through Zoom. This isn't like the planning board meeting, so I know you guys are in the council chambers, and I had to stop, so hopefully you guys can hear. Can you hear?
Yes, we can.
All right. So actually, doing it through this format is quite helpful to me, because what I wanted to do was just basically present to the new counselors a timeline of what has been going on with the Markley Group since their arrival to Lowell. And it's very brief. You know, I'll try and keep it succinct, but basically, I live down here, and as you see at the time of the original plan, which I don't know how, you know, how much you guys can see down there, but you probably just have a screen in your room, but I'm trying to zoom this in as much as possible. Originally, all the generators, including what you have before you tonight, were supposed to be in the northern side of the property, up here in an equipment yard where you see the Hales Brook going by, and over here is actually a zoned light industrial complex. And so that was where they were all supposed to go originally. However, after the original planning board meeting where they got approval in July of 2015, all of a sudden, four diesel generators popped up right down here, and as a result, you know, that's right in my backyard. These diesel generators, you've basically come before the counselors that have been on the council's tent 2015. You know me very well. Every time they come up before you, I mention about a problem with these generators. They're tiered lightly. When they're on, they tend to, you know, basically, they just pollute the neighborhood. If they're on for anything more than their weekly check, which is about five minutes each, they are on for like usually a full day, which is a whole eight hours. It is not tenable to have those right so close. And so these two were installed at the beginning of this year, which the council already gave approval for. This is looking right out my back window. These are within 100 feet of my house. So while I do not actually have an opposition to you guys approving the tanks, I'm asking for you guys to do me a favor. They are going to be coming before you for more tanks soon, because as you see here, this is the old Prince Spaghetti building. They are working on finishing that up. In order for me to get them to comply with what the Massachusetts regulations are with regards to smokestack heights, I need you guys to commit tonight to put a string on this approval. That string being that in order for them to have any more tanks approved on the north side, that these have to be taller than the height of my house, not the height of this building, the height of my house, because I sit on a hill behind them. These smokestacks should actually be about the height of this building here, not the one that you see here. Furthermore, this is another direction, just to show you, this is my property here, the house here, and that this is 100 feet, because as you can see, all that is the difference between here is the access road, about five feet this way, and about another, I'd say probably maybe 20 feet going towards the generator that's closest to me. So I wanted to impress upon you guys, this is really close to me. This is a view from Born Street. These two generators have been the ones that have been the bane of my existence since 2016, when you guys initially approved them. These two are the ones that are active right now, that are actually running, that have been permitted by Mass D E P to go. They've put conning towers on them to try and get the emissions to go in a more straight-up fashion. Unfortunately, due to the topography of the area, we are uphill from these, and so again, these smokestacks do not actually help get rid of the smell from the area, because the wind blows from the north, comes this way, and then goes south, and there's over here a whole bunch of houses where it just forms like a cul-de-sac, and that's where the smoke gets out and forms the eastern end of that cul-de-sac. So I'm just basically trying to come here tonight before you guys. I'm not opposed to the tanks going into the north. However, I need you guys to put a string on this. This needs to end. So if you could please end it, that would be great.
Thank you.
Eileen Castle.
My name is Eileen Castle, and I live at 64 Otis Street. I would like to ask you several questions regarding the fuel. I would like to know why Mr. Markley needs an additional 15,100 gallons of fuel. They already have 30,000 on their property, which doesn't show on the request. It says total on property, and it never shows that they have 40... They will have 45 gallons of fuel. I would also like to know, like, they just can't do a scheduled delivery. Everybody else does scheduled deliveries for things. I think that would be at least helpful so that we wouldn't have this storage all the time. These, I think, I'm not positive, these generators are a new concept, because they're talking about the fuel is going to be under the generators. I'd like to know where we can find a working example so that we can at least ask questions, find out, you know, how much the smell, like Mr. Forte said, he's been dealing with this for years. I think it's time for the rest of the neighborhood not to have to start dealing with it. They can fix his, and maybe we can find someplace that has the right things. I think he's been talking to people at the EPA, and he knows that the stacks will need... They will need higher stacks. I'd like to know what size the stacks are going to be on this... On these. We have people that have asthma, various things, small children. They're down at the other end of Born Street, but they have very close neighbors, just like he's a close neighbor. And I think it's time for the city to look into these things and make sure that this is not harming the neighborhood. This is what Lowell is all about, is the neighborhood. I know Mr. Markley has invested a lot of money, and he would like to make sure that everything is taken care of, but I think we all need to make sure that the neighborhoods are taken care of. We don't want people sick, and we don't want to have people going back to Lowell and talking about, you know, needing to have healthcare benefits and things like that. I want to know if the insurance will go up on their homes. I did speak to a lot of the neighbors, and they are all opposed to these tanks. I got 75 names or so that went to the planning board, and I did not send it to you, because it didn't say exactly on it that it was about the tank, about these, the fuel. I'd also like to know some safety issues. They're important, and I think we need to protect all our neighbors. I would like to make sure that the city has checked the water and make sure that there's the capability of the trucks getting around the building, that the road is passable now that they are putting all this new stuff in the area. I would like to make sure that the water, which I was told hasn't been finished yet, that that is finished, and so that the neighborhood will be protected in at least some way. I don't know. The diesel fuel smell, I know, is really bad. I am hoping that you will think about not allowing them to use the industry entrance, which would certainly be closer to this new road they're proposing, but that's supposed to be an emergency entrance only, and I'm hoping that that's the way it's going to stay, because it's going to be going by people's houses, behind people's houses. So I think those are the questions I have, and I appreciate your listening tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll go to the next one. Jacqueline Coles.
Yes, I'm here. So I live at 7th Born Street in Lowell, Massachusetts, and I was brought into this... Well, informed of this situation a little late in the game, but I have definitely been informed between Mr. Tabor and Ms. Castle, and I would basically just like to reiterate and support what they are saying. I don't have anything else to add, but I am definitely concerned, living in this area and very close to where the Markley facility is, about the air quality and how this will affect my health as well as those that are around me. I mean, sometimes you may not be able to knowingly be affected by this in order to say, one, two, three years down the road, that this is affecting you or isn't. So I would just like to express that concern, and second, what Mr. Tabor and Ms. Castle stated.
Thank you.
And just Nancy Fortes. I don't know if she's there. That's it.
Anyone else in opposition?
But I have definitely been informed between Mr. Tabor and Ms. Castle.
She's on. She wants to speak. No, that was one... That was prior one that just... No, she didn't speak. Elizabeth Pellerito. They're all in, John.
She already spoke, right?
No, she didn't.
Elizabeth didn't.
No, she's on another line.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. That portion is closed. Counselor Elliott?
No, I just... I think that the residents raised some good points, some interesting points. You know, Markley has been a good... You know... You know, Markley has been a good, you know, welcome to the city, and we supported, you know, many items, many incentives to get them here. I think that, you know, certainly the air quality issue makes some sense to me that, I know the location, I've been there a number of times, and the smokestacks, given the height, I think it would be not a unreasonable request to have them increase those smokestacks to accommodate the concerns of the neighbors. So I'd like to ask the proponents if they can make that happen. I think it's, I think there's quality of life issue, and people don't want to be breathing the diesels, they don't oppose the additional storage, but in exchange, I mean, there's more, more storage, more capacity, so that, to me, that means that the generator, generators could have a propensity to be operating more. So I think it's a reasonable request, and I'd like to either ask that question or make a condition of this, I don't know if we can make a condition of the permit, but I, I think that those smokestacks should be raised in order to, you know, go above the ceiling of those, of those homes.
Bill Tabor's still on, I believe?
Yes, I am.
Did you have a question?
If you have a particular question regarding the heights, we're working with the Mass DEP on the, on the heights. I believe they meet the regulations at this time, but I believe Markley is willing to look into the potential of making them higher to help with the neighbors.
Okay, so can we make that a condition of this permit? Because I, I think that's important. I, I do understand, Mr. Tabor, that you perhaps, that the existing stacks meet the requirements of DEP, but given the topography and the, you know, the nature of the homes and their proximity to those generators, I think that would be a fair compromise to, to address air quality issues.
Do you want to matter manager?
Thank you. According to the solicitor, you can make a condition. I'm not sure the speaker, I thought he may have said the next tanks, but...
Yeah.
That, that he, it was the next installation?
At, at this time, we're talking about tanks on the north side, which do not affect the neighbors. They're on the opposite side of the building. What the neighbors are talking about is the two new generators that have already been permitted and installed, and they'd like to see the height of those which are already approved.
Correct.
The stack increased there.
Correct, that, that's...
Everybody is clear on what's happening. The tanks that we're looking to permit today are on the opposite side of the building, and the neighbors don't appear to have an issue with those tanks.
Right, he said he didn't oppose...
Well, some of the neighbors did have, they do have concerns with it. If you listen to some of the speakers, I'm not sure if you were able to, but they, they have reservations about safety concerns and, you know, so I just, just want to make, from what I heard, both speakers raised a number of questions. But if, if you're willing to make that concession, I'll support it, otherwise I will not.
I think we can definitely look at raising the height, and we'll work with the Mass DEP to make sure we, we presently need all the requirements, and if we need to raise them up a little higher, we can definitely look at doing that.
Okay, thank you. Council Noon, then Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that we welcomed the Markley Group to Lowell a while back. You know, it's not hard to ask that the Markley Group be a little more transparent with the neighborhood and be a good neighbor in addressing those concern. The, the outdoor water tank, this, this issue was, was actually addressed in the planning board September 10, and they didn't, I don't think they vote on it because those same concern was raised by the neighborhood people in term of the water tank, the screening, maybe beautify it a little bit so that it doesn't look like an eyesore to the neighborhood. And there's also a talk about water pressure, water, water distribution and stuff, you know, and also a talk about exactly what Councilor, Speaker and Councilor Elliot spoke of is the generator, the, the smokestack. I, I think I understand that this smokestack is regulated by the, the DEP, the Mass DEP, of course, but, you know, if you raise it up a little bit, certainly will address some of the neighborhood concern, the neighbor concern. Those two speakers spoke of it. I know that other at the planning board this spoke to that concern as well, that, that the smokestack. If you go a little, I understand that it's regulated by the, the Mass, the DEP, but if you raise it up, it's a good thing because not only that, it's, it's the smoke emitted up there, whatever that is, you know, and so the safety concern, I know that the DEP will look in it to the safety concern in term of, you know, the emissions and stuff like that, but the high of it, it's not too much to ask, isn't it? So I, I think, I think, you know, we, we just urge that the Markley Group work with the neighborhood and, and address this concern so that we can move forward with this big project that the Markley Group is doing. That's all.
Thank you. Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that the Markley Group has done a tremendous job in the city, very big company, and they have all this data staying there and they protect it and all this. I understand that. And when I look at this application, we see that the fire chief, Joe Roth, signed off on that. That's all well and good. We're trying to be good partners here, but I hear the plea of the residents around there, and I don't believe that they're referring to what's happening there now, but I know that they're thinking about the future, and I know that they had questions, and I don't think they're answered. So I anticipate when the next move comes that Bill Tabor and George come before us. I won't support anything unless I know that they met with the neighbors to discuss their concerns, and when everybody's happy, then they can come here. I'll support this right now, today, but I feel for the neighbors. I want to know, I want to know the safety, the air quality, delivery options. I don't know, is that such a possibility that instead of building all these towers, they could have a delivery option? I don't know this. And the increase, the smokestack? I know they're complying with the rules, or they wouldn't be in operation, but the fact remains that I don't see what the problem is to raise it a little bit higher just for the safety in concern. Maybe there's no threat there, but to the people that live close by, there probably is. So I, I'm giving you this message, Bill, hoping that you could talk to George, and next time you come before us, it'll be a little bit smoother than it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is for Mr. Bill Tabor. I, I concur with a lot of comments Council Elliot stated earlier, you know, we truly welcome the Markley Group into our city, and the company has made a big investment to help, help the city revenue-wise, but there has to be a balance of quality of life with companies and, and the residents and basically the city of Lowell. And I, I know that a big company as the Markley Group, with all the experts and so forth, I'm pretty sure that you know all the guidelines, the specification to get the permit and so forth, but I, I just want to confirm, I know that you got the, the permitted project that the smokestack were already put up. You know, just going back a little bit, the residents may not have an issue with the, this request for the new one, but they do have a concern about the smokestack that's already been, that happened permitted. And are you looking to, as you mentioned earlier, are you going to seek to increase the smokestack for the permitted one also in addition to the new ones as well? Is that what you said earlier?
Yes, I, I believe what we're talking about is the two that Mr. Fortes had brought up. Those are the two that they're concerned, they're right by his house, and we're looking at what it would take to increase the size of the, the height of those.
Great. I, I think if you are going to work on the improvement on the already permitted smokestacks that the two speaker are concerned with, I would definitely support this, this new request as well. Thank you, no more for the comment.
Council Elliot?
I was going to suggest we send this to the Neighborhood Subcommittee and have the, you know, the, the Markley Group meet with the neighbors to, to iron out these differences.
I'll second that.
Okay. So motion by Council Elliot, second by Council Conway. All those in favor? Say aye. Okay, roll call on that. Mayor Leahy? Yes. Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Nine ayes. Mr. Mayor? Sure, Council Rourke and then Council Elliot.
Yeah, well, we still have the speakers online, and also being the chair of the Neighborhood Subcommittee, if two weeks from today works, matter manager, I don't know about the restrictions with, due to COVID or whatnot, but it seems like something that has to get dealt with pretty soon, right?
I, I, I would think so. The sooner the better for all concerned, so...
I mean, depending on how many people we have...
Yeah.
I'm free to do it two weeks from tonight at 5:00 or something like that if you'd like to.
I believe the...
If it's possible.
School committee has their budget hearing two weeks from tonight, so...
On Tuesday?
Yeah, they're having it on the 29th.
Oh, so we'll do it, so our next meeting is two weeks from tonight?
Our next meeting is three weeks.
Oh, okay, three weeks from tonight, then, that's cool. All right, that's fine.
Chair, Council Elliot?
So if I could suggest, I don't know how feasible it is for the Markley Group to meet with the neighbors. Certainly we can facilitate that, which I think makes sense to the Subcommittee, but if there was, you know, an opportunity, I know there's a neighborhood group just being formed, so there's not a neighborhood group, but, you know, not trying to delay this other than to, to work with the neighborhood and while, while the time is ripe, quite frankly, to, to address their concerns, and now's the time to do this. So if the meeting is going, can happen between Markley and the neighbors, if, I don't know who's going to get in touch with who, but I just think it's important to, to iron out any differences or address any concerns that the neighborhood has. So I, I guess we leave that up to, I don't know, you matter manager or the Markley Group to reach out to the speakers who have concerns and, and the neighborhood.
Matter manager?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Bill while he's on the phone, I don't know if he has the communication or the, the information to connect, but we can certainly facilitate that through my office. But, you know, I, I agree, I think the more that they can speak directly, and then, of course, it could come to the Subcommittee, but it may be helpful to have conversation beforehand.
Right, exactly.
Mr., is Bill still on?
I'm still on, and yes, we can get together with your office and set up some sort of meeting. Obviously, we'd like to get it done sooner rather than later.
Okay, so, and, and all of these speakers, maybe what, we, we have, Mr. Clerk, we have their contact information, correct?
We do, matter manager.
Okay. So we can, we can try and reach out to all the speakers and, and, Bill, and your, your group to try and facilitate a meeting, if that's going to be helpful, in advance of the Subcommittee.
Sure, and if need be, we can also go there to the site if we have to.
Right. We could also schedule...
We could set up a meeting at the site. I'll need to talk to Markley, but we have obviously meeting rooms there. We'd have to take a look at the COVID, COVID issues to make sure we've got proper spacing and handling, but I think we could do, we could do that if need be.
All right, well, we will...
And even meet outside, which might even be better, the standard these days.
Because we can definitely walk and show you the, the generators themselves and walk around the back.
Okay, so we'll coordinate, we'll coordinate with, with you and with the Subcommittee to schedule in post an outdoor meeting so that everybody can get together out at the site.
Yes.
Okay, I'll settle on that. All right. So we're all done with the, to do public hearings, so get back into motion responses, walkway installation behind Lowell Memorial Auditorium. Council Mercier? There's a registered speaker here, Mr. Mayor. All right. We'll go to the registered speaker. Matt Alkins?
I'm just waiting for the connector.
All right, Matt Alkins? Should be on now.
Hello?
Hi, Matt. You can...
Hi.
You've got five minutes to speak on the issue?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'd like to thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight. Vice Mayor Mercier, thank you for the previous motion and working on this issue. I come before you tonight as commander of the Greater Lowell Veterans Council, GLVC, to speak on the issue of the Riverwalk Project, specifically the area of the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, LMA. In openness and transparency, I have emailed the city clerk, mayor, and city council documents I have obtained as a member of the Monument Committee and photos I have taken of the area in question. I'd also like to thank DPD for their response to the motion made by Vice Mayor Mercier that we'll be addressing along with the communications I received from Mr. Craig Thomas, DPD Assistant Director and Member of the Monument Committee. First, a short synopsis of the GLVC. We were established in June 1919 in the Lowell Veterans Association and originally based in the Lowell, based in the Westford Street Armory that is now known as the Armory Park on Westford Street. We were written into the charter that has created the LMA so that we would call the LMA home and moved into the LMA when it was completed in 1922. The LMA has been our home for the last 98 years and are honored to call it home. We are, we are a central part of the community for decades, and, but that is, that went for a short time. In the last four years, we have reemerged as a voice for the veteran community. Today, the GLVC consists of 24 veterans organizations associated with POW, MIA, National League of Families, Gold Star Wives, Mothers, and Families, sporting, sporting venues, and a number of media agencies, community outreach entities, veterans, support groups, VA programs, regional veterans, service officers, and do outreach in the local veteran community to, to name only a few things. The Riverwalk Expansion Project along the Memmerack and Conquer Rivers will certainly allow people to enjoy the beauty and tranquility of those rivers that were so important to Lowell's history and helped to found and build Lowell into the wonderful city it is today. The aspect of the project that I wish to address is the area that affects the LMA. I was made aware of this aspect of the project from an email I received as a member of the Monument Committee. In an attached document authored by the MAS Building and Bridge Incorporated, they were looking to, quote, expedite review, unquote, the removal of POW, MIA, Vietnam, and Marine Corps monuments and a bench dedicated by Mr. and Mrs. Doussault, the six trees in the same island and surround the World War I cannon in a protective fence. Only after approval of removal, they would, quote, provide a detailed plan of procedure and protection and for, and of removal, unquote. They wish to do this in an area questioned as a staging area for a crane and bridge that will connect the Riverwalk to the mill side of the LMA. Many things have transpired on and since the August 17 meeting of the Monument Committee. Ms. Trad, the Assistant City Manager and Director of DPD, attended the Monument Committee meeting to address this request. When I stated that I spoke with Pete Lowly, President of the Lowell Monument Group, and a trustee that would, and that they were not aware of the project in progress to this point, Ms. Trad then identified herself as a trustee, this was false. She, in fact, attended the meeting as a representative of DPD. Ms. Trad admitted that she misrepresented herself in an email response to this on August 19. At the meeting, Ms. Trad assured the Monument Committee that no work would commence until spring of 2021. Construction timeline was misrepresentative and withheld by Ms. Trad and Mr. Thomas. It was stated that all parties would be notified prior. This was also false. Construction has already begun and no one has been contacted. Ms. Trad stated that DPD may trans, may... Ms. Trad stated that DPD may end up transporting and storing the monuments. I had concerns of the monuments being in city custody due to when reservations were done at the LMA Room 3V. Historical memorial items were removed from the LMA property and relocated in the library in City Hall with the assurance that these items would be returned. They were, in fact, lost, and the city stated that they had no knowledge of them or their whereabouts. Another member of the committee stated that they are aware of monuments being removed in other parts of the city, lost, and never returned. I was informed by Rick Bodie, General Superintendent of Product, and David Marinelli, Superintendent of Product, on September 16th that MAS was hiring a professional monument moving specialist to move the monuments in question. They also stated that they had received a green light to get the project done recently. I have also learned that Ms. Trad was involved with the renovations at the LMA, and it was suggested that she was involved with the renovations in Room 3V, where the items were removed from, taken into custody, and subsequently lost. This casts grave doubts on her sincerity for the care of protection of the monuments currently.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, Mr. Mayor, I am going to object to the characterization by the speaker. First of all, this is about the LMA and the monuments, and I'm going to take issue with any type of character assassination of the Assistant City Manager.
Matt, if you can just wrap it up. You're at your 15, your five minutes, and just please be, keep your comments professional. Thank you.
I was just trying to account for everything that's been going on since then. I guess, in short, since, really don't, I have not been afforded the opportunity and time to go over everything that has been transpired since the August 17th. It is my position that, due to the evidence that I was going to present, that the issue at hand has been dealt with with dishonesty.
All right, Matt, you're all, you're at the end of your time, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Council Mercier?
There's no other speakers.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the City Manager. I did not know what Matt would be saying, but he contacted me a while ago and asked me, did I know about this project? And I didn't. So, I went down and I met with him. We discussed this, and I took his concerns, and I brought it forth for a motion. And I received the report, and I asked him if he had received it, and he said no. So, I brought it to where he lives, and I gave him a copy of exactly what I have. What he's saying is a little bit contrary to what I understand. I understand that the Monument Committee is aware of what's going on. I understand that some, I won't say all, because I didn't talk to all, but the Lowell Memorial Auditorium Board members are aware of it as well. I'm fully happy with what I received. I didn't know that he, I thought after he read this, he would know, but I don't know where he's coming from. I feel bad that, I don't think anybody should come here before this council and, you know, rip someone apart like this. I don't know. I'm just thankful for the report. I thought he would be too. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Council Elliot?
So, the gist of the motion is there is a $4.8 million project, partnership between the City Lowell and the National Park, to extend a walkway. The project will extend a mile or mils. So, this report reflects that there's, all consideration is going to be taken to ensure the proper protection of the monuments, including the landscaping, the lindens, and the maple trees that have been planted there for decades. So, is, I'm confused. I think it's a good report. I don't really know what the issue is relative to this project.
Yes, so there were concerns that Council Mercier brought about some of the trees. At one point, there seemed to be the impression that all of the trees may come down, which would be terrible. We did ask them to avoid that. And Diane Trad and Craig Thomas have been working with the contractor, bringing in someone who knows how to move and protect monuments, limiting to the most possible, to possibly one tree that may come down, but replacing them with more appropriate time that were built, would have been planted back in the day.
Okay.
I know Craig is on the line to answer questions.
No, that's fine. Can I just ask you about the drilling and the bridge? And what impact that has? It seemed like there was a request for a barge that certainly would not fit in the river.
Yeah, I think they were looking at what other options they could. They explored all options as far as how to bring the equipment to the back part of the, but it is adding.
In order to do the construction?
To do the construction.
Got it.
Yeah, having nothing to do with the monuments or the trees. But the effort is there. Certainly, a professional monument mover and protector and has been hired. They're taking all steps to protect the monument. They were taking all steps to preserve the trees, healthy trees. There's some that aren't healthy, maybe, but the ones that we were talking about, to preserve those because of the beauty that they, and the age of them in front of the auditorium.
Okay, thank you. It was a good motion. We get a good report. We know answers. It's a very good project, and it's really going to add to, you know, the myriad of walkway that we have in the city.
And it is my understanding that DPD did reach out to Mr. Elkins, asking to meet with him there and discuss, and he declined.
Any further discussion? Council Newn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great project, because I know that National Park have been waiting for this funding to come, $4.8 million to expand this Riverwalk. And I know the city managers and this superintendent of park have been talking about it. And I do trust Diane Trad and her team to make sure to address those concerns that Mr. Elkin brought up, and I know they do, and I'm confident that that will happen, or continue to happen, to have that dialogue. And this is something that we needed for the Riverwalk, the expansion of 1.5 mile. So, I think it's a great, great project.
And Council Newn, I can assure you Diane Trad, Craig Thomas, their whole team have been out there at the site, meeting with the contractors, meeting with all concerned, so.
As well as Steve Stoll.
And Steve Stoll, I think, is also available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I didn't mean to get, for that to get disrespectful. I was reading ahead on the next part, on the next report. So, I apologize for that. All set with this one? Next one is, where are we? Recycling? Update on the recycling?
Yes, I believe Christine Clancy is available to address this report. This is an informational report that we referred to earlier to address the last recycling, just to give the counselor an overview of the challenges and to let people know that there will be another recycling done. And we can get the exact dates, but I think it's in about two weeks' time. Is Christine on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. So, before you read the report to summarize the audit that was completed in January, we had an audit completed by Waste Management of our recycling that was completed in January over a two-week period. And before you two were the results. And really, each neighborhood or each recycling route was sampled and random testing. There's some pictures here to show you some of the findings in that testing. So, what Waste Management did was do that random testing and take out anything that was not considered recycling, and then report the percentage of contamination. So, it varied between each day. And so, the blended rate of contamination is 24%. And that does reflect the higher percentage of contamination, the more we pay. And as discussed earlier in tonight's budget presentation, we want to be below 20%. We came in at 24% as a blended rate, anywhere from 8%, 8.9%. Belvedere had 10.5%. It was Centerville was 8.9%. And some other areas, a lot had 30%. Downtown acre area had 62.7%. So, it's various across the city, but it's a blended rate 24%. And so, that audit is coming up again in October. So, we will start on October 5th. It's about a two-week period with Waste Management, and then they will report their findings. And that new contamination rate, I mean, we obviously want to see a rate below 24% or our goal is below 20% if possible. But if we do have a higher rate, then we will see increased fees associated with our contractor Waste Management, because we're paying for that increased contamination. And we, I guess, we also, we're out with our solid waste and recycling group doing inspections as we can and finding possible, putting warnings on recycling containers if we see something. So, some, this also provides, some of the, there's some pictures in the report that was provided, and some of the contamination varies from, some people recycled very well, but put everything into a plastic bag. Anything in that bag, whether it be trash or recycling, is considered trash. So, that was a common find in the audit. Other, I mean, sometimes there are people, food. So, also one thing, so clean recycling. So, there was containers that were recyclable, but they were full of food. So, that was another, that's considered contamination. And then we found air conditioning units. There were, I mean, various other things that were clearly not recycling. So, we will be doing this audit starting October 5th, and we will provide an additional update to the council on those findings. And just want to remind everyone that it's really, it's really a citywide effort to try to recycle. There's also in the packet, there's the report, just, and we will post this on social media. It's on our city website, about recycling tips. So, really, plastic bottles, we want to keep it simple, plastic bottles, containers, aluminum cans, paper, and cardboard common. And there's a lot of common, and clothes, things that are not recyclable, clothing, food, plastic, again, plastic bags was that common item that we found in the contamination in the January audit. So, there's, we have literature on our website available to answer any questions now. And also, if anyone has any questions, they can contact our, contact DPW for any recycling tips. And also, just with COVID, we have seen increased contamination throughout the city. And I think it's just because people are home and that people are generating more waste at home. So, we are seeing that as well. Just one other update that we have is we do have a recycling container here at DPW. And more recently, we've seen increased contamination. So, we have closed that facility to, I mean, it's open, but it's appointment-only. So, before, you could come at any point in time and drop off that recycling. And now it is appointment-only and, or calling the, to schedule that with our recycling, with our solid waste and recycling group. And so, we found, I mean, it was, we found oil drums, and we found some really egregious illegal dumping in that recycling container. So, that is why we unfortunately have had to go to an appointment-only for now. I don't know if there's any particular questions?
Any questions from the council? Council Elliot?
So, what is the next step? We've been going through this for months and months, and you can understand, you know, some issues that need to be clarified, but it's really very basic what is recyclable. And I think Council Conway spoke about this in the Finance Subcommittee. It's cardboard, it's, it's plastic bottles, it's cans, tin cans, and that's really about it. You can't put dirt and wood and air conditioners and construction debris. And when, you know, I think of note the clarification, the plastic bags, yes, the plastic bags that people get at the supermarket, but in large part, what they're talking about are the five-gallon trash bags that people perhaps, I think they put in the five-gallon containers full of recyclables, and then just take the recyclables and put in the recycling bin. That whole bag is now considered trash. So, for folks at home, I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but those plastic trash bags, as well as I'm sure the other bags, are in large part the problem that's causing, as we learned, hundreds of thousands of dollars, $750,000 of fees. So, you know, we want to recycle. I know it's a state law, but Madam Manager, we get to the point where if people are not going to recycle, I mean, there are some neighborhoods that contamination, if you look at this map, are not recycling very much at all. I mean, there's very, very high percentage of, so, in any event, we, you know, to the people at home, this is just costing, it's costing the taxpayers more. And I understand, and I don't know what the solution is. Christine mentioned it. People at home more, perhaps generating more trash. I don't know. You have to buy the plastic bags that cost $1.50, that's all. Madam Manager, anything else?
You know, Council, I agree, as we talked about during the budget. This is not sustainable, the rate we're going. We need to come up with another solution. In the short term, we're trying to alert people. Another audit is happening beginning of October. So, please, 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 pay attention to the recycling and use the green bin for appropriate recycling materials. And the material is available. And use your red bin for trash or your blue bin, depending on what, or, they're all green, but they have different color tops as far as the recycling. But to please pay attention. It's costing everybody money. This is, this is coming out of the taxpayers' pockets.
So, part of our ordinance is there an enforcement mechanism? And we don't want to start giving people, especially during this time, tickets or citations. However, when you're finding air conditioners in the recycling bin,
Right.
to me, that someone should, we're paying for.
That's something that we're looking at. The team has been going out to areas with enforcement. I think Commissioner Clancy, the team has been giving warnings and information on how you recycle. And we can do enforcement as well. Is that correct?
That is correct. We do warnings, up to three warnings, and then enforcement. And then there can be different levels of enforcement. There are some people that have, are repeat offenders. So, ultimately, if it is a really truly a repeat offender, we really, we can take away their recycling ability. But we really try to correct that through just providing warnings, and sometimes that does address the concern. And I guess one other, one other common contamination is styrofoam. I think one other thing that maybe not in the flyers, you know, glass bottles is also a common generation in households. That's also, that is recyclable.
And one of the benefits of the audit is it does give us target areas to put our efforts in terms of education and in terms of enforcement. But we are trying to reach out again before this next audit.
So, Madam Manager, the trash fee on an annual basis for the, for the average family homeowner, on an annual basis?
Connor, do you have that?
$125 a year?
Christine, do you have the?
What's the annual trash fee, Christine?
It's $125 per average. You know, there's some other rates depending on small carts for discounts, but it's $125 for a household.
So, there is a senior discount for a smaller bin? And I know we've had that discussion. So, and that's building quarterly payments on the water sewer bill, right? So, an average of about?
Yes.
Forty, three fours, okay. A quarter, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Council Mercier, then Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to try to compare one person to another, but I think that it was such a tremendous idea to go out to the public by way of the news media outlets. I really firmly believe that people get up in the morning, they turn on the radio station, they listen to Teddy. I don't want to give them a plug, and I have no bell to ring, but I really think that that's a program where the recycling coordinator could go on and say things like this. Please don't throw your shredded paper in recycling. People think because it's paper, it goes in the recycling, and it doesn't. Recycle, do you believe that? So, I think people don't know that, and they put it out there. Little things like that, and I think that would be great. The glass is important, but if you have like spaghetti sauce in that glass, you have to rinse it out and then throw it in the recycling. These are the things. These are the things that people probably don't know and want to hear, and that might help us as well. The radio, any program that's available, I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if there is any good time when you get penalized financially, and this is disheartening during a budget crisis where we're getting hit almost $800,000 just for a penalty fee. This is almost like you're trying to balance the checking account of the bank, and then on a limited budget, and then you get all kinds of transaction fees, and it's just eating down the budget so fast. I remember when, in January, when I saw all the material being put out for education, to promote the recycling material, what you can do, what you cannot do, and they were colorful, I think we did all kind of medium. But now seeing that it didn't really work, and maybe to piggyback on a little bit of Council Mercy was saying, to go on the radio, but more generally, a question for Christine, can we explore some other methods of reaching out to the people? Because obviously, again, that the campaign that we did back in January didn't really work, and if anything, it really put us in a deeper hole. Is there a kind of exploration of material, or I don't know, some kind of psychology issue, or educational materials like that, that we can look into differently?
I think we can explore additional, I think it's important to reach different types, so we can do Facebook, we can do Twitter. The radio, I think, is a great idea, that wasn't really done to the extent that I think was discussed earlier. So I think, I think it's important to reach, because not everyone listens to the radio, not everyone follows Facebook, so I think it's important to just reach different types of public notices. And we had, you know, we had flyers, we put posters all over the city, City Hall, now people aren't really going down to City Hall. So I think really important right now is this social media, and a radio, or the LTC. So we will explore, I guess, those different options.
I can tell, it is exciting to, you know, to recycle, to be part of the, making the earth green, and I know that you did all you could, and the city, or they can't even go into the different neighborhood groups and so forth. I'm just really puzzled right now, I'm really frustrated that, you know, that we, in this economic situation, what the city is facing, that we're still facing this type of penalty that we didn't have to. And it's just my frustration, it's not really a question, more of a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that there's a lot of effort being put in there, in this, from the manager office, the DPW. I just don't understand, somehow people don't get it. It's their tax, their tax, my taxes, everyone taxes. The good thing come out of this audit is this, if you look at it, those area that is 62-plus percentage, there's a different outreach you have to apply. One way fit all, it's not going to work. You really have to apply different outreach effort here. It may have to resort to door-to-door, like census, you know, and other, maybe radio, other maybe Facebook. But it have, you have to look at how's work in other city and town, but one of the things I would recommend is that would be, you know, hiring someone to do outreach like the way census does, because this is going to save us a lot of money down the road, really. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager, when a house, when an apartment building gets whatever fine, does it go to the renter, or does it go to the home, to the building owner?
The, so larger buildings have to contract privately.
Right.
This would be for, I think the multiple is three or four units. Christine, if you know?
I don't know, but I believe it is three or four units, and I imagine it would go to the homeowner, but we.
It would go to the owner, yeah. It would go to the owner of the property. So if someone had tenants, it would really be up to the landlord to communicate with their tenants.
Okay. And then, is it a good idea, as Council Noon said, to hire temporary workers to go out and actually look at this stuff? Would that offset the fines that we're paying?
Well, we did get a grant for some outreach workers, we are exploring, you know, that, they, we had some that started, and we can look into that in terms of whether there's, you know, that in the long run, it would certainly save money.
Sure.
Short run, we have to figure out how to pay for it, that's.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody all set on this? Need a motion to accept the communications placed on file by Council Mercy, seconded by Council Chow. Five-three, reappoint Ulu Ibram to the Cultural Council. Motion to accept the place on file by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Chow. Votes. Vote to amend the jam plan extending term date. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Lowell, in City Council, vote authorizing city manager on behalf of the City of Lowell to request approval pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 121B, 48 and 7660, CMR 12, that requires City of Lowell undergo a process to extend Jackson Appleton Middlesex Urban Revitalization Jam Plan for additional ten years. Move to approve. Motion by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Samaras. Roll call?
Billy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Six-two, vote to apply and accept Mass in motion grant. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, in City of Lowell, in City Council, vote authorizing city manager on behalf of the City of Lowell to accept and expend a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services Department of Public Health in the amount of $60,000 for fiscal year 2021. Motion approved by Council Noon, seconded by Council Chow. Roll call?
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Six-three, vote, accept, expend tobacco control grant. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Lowell, in City Council, vote authorizing city manager to accept and expend funds from a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the continuation of tobacco control program to be administered by the City of Lowell Health Department. Motion approved by Council Chow, seconded by Council Noon. Roll call?
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Seven-two, wire inspector, National Grid, request installation of 375 feet of gas main for infrastructure reinforcement from 1,500 to 1,524 Gorm Street. Motion to adopt and accept the accompanying order by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Seven-four, wire inspector, National Grid, request to reconstruct gas pressure regulator and add SCAD system at the intersection of Carlisle and Gorm Streets. Motion to adopt and accept the accompanying order by Council Samaras, seconded by Council Petitions. Eight-one, two prop, we have two claims, property damage, motion to refer to Law Department for a report and recommendation by Council Conway, seconded by Council Chow. Miscellaneous, Robert Grimes requests installation of traffic circle in front of VP fuels at the corners of Gorm, Saratoga, and Carlisle Street. Motion to accept and refer to Traffic Engineer for a report and recommendation by Council Noon, seconded by Council Elliot. All right, and then we have a speaker on this?
We do, on the next one, Mr. Mayor.
Eight-three, miscellaneous, Sobin Penn requests policy procedure to issue a citation to the Cambodian government officials.
Sobin Penn?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
You're all set, yep.
I don't see myself, but, okay. Do I, should I start speaking now?
Yes, we can hear you, we can't see, there we go. We can see you now.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, may I start?
Yes, you may start, please.
Thank you for, good evening, Lowell Mayor John Lee, and fellow council member. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council chamber tonight. My name is Sobin Penn, I am a Lowell resident, a small business owner, and a publisher of the Committee Post USA. I am proud to serve this community for the past 10 years. What brought me here today because of the recent event at a funeral of a Cambodian member, Mr. Nisailik, Mr. Mayor John Lee, he joined with some CPP members, Cambodian People's Party, and issued Lowell citation along with Cambodian Prime Minister Sun Sun Hun Manet, and other CPP high-ranking member citation at the event. So my question is this, how can our mayor issue a citation to an individual who was a political lobbyist for Hun Sun government, which this very council have voted to associate our city by rejecting Prime Minister Hun Sun's Sun Sun's visit just as little as four years ago? With all due respect to the family, I objected to this citation was given. We should not allow Hun Sun's government change a cyber story on the American soil as he silent and changed history in Cambodia. Tonight, I hope that, I present you a package, I hope you see it on your desk, that show action which have been taken against Cambodian government by the United States government and by Human Rights Watch. Please take a moment to review, and let us have a common understanding that what Cambodian Americans want is just the same as what the United States government wants for Cambodia, that is, for its government to respect human rights, freedom of speech, and free and fair election. In recent years, the international community has spoken clearly about the constant worsening democracy in Cambodia. People told me, oh, your community is divided, there is Sokri Chow counselor group, and there is Council Noon's group, like, you know, something has to do with Cambodia, like a Republican and Democrats. Today, I'm here to tell you that is this information. In 1991, the Paris Peace Agreement guaranteed that Cambodia will be governed as a democratic country. However, time and time again, Prime Minister Hun Sun has suppressed free elections, dismantled judiciary system, beaten and jailed prior elected official, and maintained his power for over 35 years. He is now the longest living dictator in Asia. Most recently, in 2017, Hun Sun arrested his opposition party leader Kam Sooka for treason, and dissolved the opposition party completely. Mr. Kam Sooka has been under house arrest ever since. In 2018 election, Hun Sun's government, CPP, took 100% of the seat. Consequently, in 2019, the US Congress passed a resolution, H.R. 526, which you see in the packet, that put sanction on Hun Sun's senior government military official, those who responsible for corruption and undermine democracy in Cambodia. Right now, US relation with Cambodia is not on friendly terms. This is not how Lowell's leadership should associate with, and Hun Manet is a top military general of Cambodia. Moving forward, I like to see our local government have the appropriate understanding about Cambodian history and politics. The council should take the responsibility to make informed decisions about whether to align itself with current Cambodian government or its representative. Time and time again, CPP, the Cambodian people, infiltrate into local politic in-law and create division in our community. The council must keep our free and democratic value front and center in their mind and hearts in dealing with these individuals. Please respect that as refugee survivor, we came to this country for peace and freedom. Cambodia also has a permanent protection by United Nations under 1991 Paris Peace Agreement. So as long as Cambodia is not truly a democratic country, some elected leaders here in Lowell or individuals who have enjoyed the democracy in this country, yet support the dictatorship either directly or indirectly, are deemed lacking in morality and violate the American spirit. We condemn those individual, and we ask that the council condemn them as well, and the history will judge them harshly. I thank you for your time, for listening to me today, and thank you for your support for Cambodia and Cambodian people, and all that you did for the community in Lowell and well beyond. I appreciate all the kindness the council have showed to us over the years, and I pledge for your support to do more, and the battle hasn't over. And we have to keep our local government in a way that align with American values, that in the best interest of Americans as a country and as a Cambodian Americans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So there's a motion, motion on the further floor, refer to Law Department for a report and recommendation. Any comments, Council Elliot?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We all know that there's been a very passionate discussions in this chamber relative to the current government and what's taking place over there. People in, Cambodian people who have survived the genocide and come to America for survival and a better life, there's still a lot of sensitivity around it, and I understand it being involved with the community like we all are. So I don't know what the Law Department is going to come back, but I think, you know, even as a new mayor myself, we don't always know what the political influences or maybe undercurrent or what is taking place. So I understand, I did know the individual that passed away, and I think the concern was the issuance of a citation from the Hun Sun government, or citations that people are concerned about. And just so, you know, interestingly enough, the Markey Gardner Cambodian Democracy Act was signed, which outlines exactly what Sobin was talking about, the human right violations and conditions in Cambodia, dissolving a national party, you know, not good things in the country. So, you know, this was passed by the US Senate, and it was actually signed by the President. So it's a bipartisan effort to bring justice and to bring democracy into Cambodia. So I understand the concern, I, you know, I support the motion to send it to the Law Department and get a report back on whether it's this or any other country, quite frankly, because I know we, there are so many, you know, people that come, whether it's, you know, I've joined Cameroonian. you know, I've, I've joined Cambodian marches and demonstrations, or so many other places across the world where there is, you know, some very, very sad things taking place to its population. So it's very sensitive, and I know it's difficult to, to navigate.
Thank you. Councillor Noon, then Councillor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Sobin asking that moving forward, you know, send this to the law department, but moving forward, along with Senators Markey and Gardner, today, I think by tomorrow or so, Congresswoman Trinh will do a press release as well on these issues. So, we here in these chambers, we here in this country, the very foundation of democracy is rooted in true basic human right, that is, freedom of thought and how the freedom and, and the freedom to express those thought, not apply Cambodian now, not apply now. Dozen of people are raised because they expressed themselves. That's not democracy. And, and this council and former mayors and, and other former mayor has been consistent on this issue. So I, I, so I, I guess it's just moving forward, we need to be cognizant of that. Cambodia issue is similar to Ireland, year back, decades ago. It's really complex, and I know that at least just about every council here knows, particularly Councillor Elliott, because he been to a lot of those rally, a lot of those supporting. Basically, what he's supporting, just like every council here, democracy. If you support democracy, you can't turn your eye away from what's going on. Every council here obligation, responsibility here in the city of law. But for council like myself, I came from there, I ran away from the Khmer Rouge, and it happen now in Cambodia in a different form. So that does have affect some of us, and I just asking that when we move forward that we be cognizant of that. So I, I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have no problem with her request to have a policy procedure in place for issuing citations, and that's, that's just general, and we should have that for, for everything, you know, not just for the single out Cambodian government officials or somebody from China or from Vietnam or from African countries. I think it's just a general idea that, you know, city of LoL is a very unique city. We're, we're like a, a small city in the United States, but we have big hearts, we have big connections, we have diversity. We're like a mini United Nations to, to the world, so, and I do feel that many countries around the world watch us, and we're not just having ego here because we deal with so many different nationalities. So I, I think this is a good request that you have a policy in place, even if you could give to the local organizations or people and so forth, you know, when and how can we do it? But what I am shocked with, and I am appalled, is that you bring international politics into small city like LoL to our community. I am reminded many times when we have motion that deal resolutions to, to the state, my colleagues would remind me that, oh, let's just focus on what's the issues in LoL, what's important to LoL, you know, how can we solve the different issues and this, different that? There's so many people that working on state issues, national issues, that we are reminded just let's just focus on, in LoL, and I am for that, you know, I am, you know, what she was saying, what the speaker was saying, that, you know, some of us here, and in particular naming myself and Councillor Visna Noon, that we could be member of certain parties elsewhere. I wholeheartedly disagree with that. Now, Councillor Noon and I, we are both American citizens, we are elected officials in the city of LoL to represent every resident in the city of LoL. We represent everyone in LoL, and we don't know the different affiliation each individuals may have. So what brought up her statement was the incident that happened, it's not incident is the wrong word, but the passing of Mr. Nisai Leek a couple weeks ago. His family, who are LoL residents, requested a citation, a posthumous citation in honor of his life. Mr. Nisai Leek was a Khmer Rouge survivor. He escaped Cambodia, he escaped Cambodia just like Councillor Noon and I did through the jungle. We came here with nothing. He got separated from his family. It took him ten years to reunite with his family to have a life in the United States. After that, he learned English, he worked for an attorney, Mr. Jim Dragon, learned the immigration laws. He then used that knowledge to help all the Cambodian immigrants in LoL to apply for citizenship. And if you recall, when I talked to many residents in LoL, when the first wave of Cambodian Americans come to LoL, there were no social services of any kind to help new arriving immigrants. So, you know, it's not like we do, we have now, we have a very complex, sophisticated, and very, very passionate system of serving new immigrants coming to LoL. But back then, eighties, we did not, even the school system did not. I know Councillor Conway told me the story about how he had to work extra hard to welcome the Cambodian students, same thing with Councillor Samaras. So what Mr. Nisai did was on his own time, with his skill, he helped many Cambodian immigrants to attain citizenship, to navigate social services around the city, he helped people unite back with their families, and he had and still has a small business on Appleton Street, which his daughter is taking over, he's paying taxes at the city. And I thought it was a great honor that I was able to participate with the mayor to issue him a posthumous citation for all the contributions that he made to the city of LoL, to the residents, to the Cambodian resident. He did not check to see if somebody were involved in politics in Cambodia or in China or in Africa. He helped all Cambodian people in a great city of LoL. And I think that he deserved that citation, honestly, and, you know, bless his soul, may, may his soul rest in peace. I still feel bad for his family, his daughter. Mr. Nisai Leek was suffering from cancer. He was battling with that, and at the end, he did not succeed. He died at a young age of sixty years old. So just, I don't want to be long-winded about this, I am very passionate about this, I'm very passionate about the residents of LoL. I am elected to represent everybody in LoL. I do not do background check, I do not do McCarthyism of where they came from, how they come here, what they believe in. I do not check if my friends are Republican, Independent, Green, Blue, Yellow. If they need help, I will help them. I will help every resident in the city. I do not do background check to see if they're political affiliation or something or some not. All of us have suffered a lot, and I remember just a couple things. The history of immigrations of Cambodian American follow many of the same immigrant groups that came to the United States, from the Greeks, the Italian, the Irish, so forth. The older generation bring overall politics to LoL. You can see that with the Greek churches, they built one block apart of each other. Many churches built one block away from each other. Right now, there are at least six or seven different Cambodian Buddhist temples. It is good, religion is good. I am a religious person, I am, I grew up Buddhist, I was sponsored by the Catholic Church, I am now Catholic, but I, my mission is to help everybody, it's part of my faith and part of my electoral, elected official duties. I support this thing for the law department to explore, you know, to have some kind of protocol, when can we issue citations, period? But the single out one country, I think that's bad look for the city of LoL. Many other countries that, you know, they have to check themselves first before they come to LoL, that's uncalled for. I believe in a great city of LoL, I believe that we should represent everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Need a motion to send this to the law department, by Councillor Noon, seconded by Councillor Elliott. Roke, Roke? No, Roke, okay. All right, all those in favor say aye. Uh, motions. First motion of the night, City Councillor Noon, request city manager and appropriate city department look for ways to encourage residents to comply with the state's social distancing and mask wearing requirement, seconded by Councillor Drinkwater. Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think wearing a mask is one of the easier things to, you know, that one can do to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen, right? So it's about being considerate and cautious. So everyone has, can take part in being a solution, you know, so I think this is simply a simple, I know that governors has, you know, proposed this already in term of when required this, wear a mask and be social distant. All we have to do is just find way to make sure that our citizens do that, or residents do that when they're out there in outdoor, you know, walking or whatnot, you know, because it certainly is a simple and easier things to do. So that's why I just ask to see if we can just, because I see a lot of people out there and wear masks out there in public. I just don't understand, and that's why I said maybe the manager have some, and other department have some idea as to how to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Second motion of the night, Councillor Noon, request city manager have law department prepare vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-five, to create affordable housing trust to provide additional options for preserving existing and providing new affordable rental and ownership units to create programs that directly assist those seeking housing, seconded by Councillor Elliott. Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the city already has a, a new revenue, a new source of revenue that is for affordable housing, at least twenty-five percent of that going to, from the recreational marijuana going through it. So it's come from a, the, and when we start to, as this council did, create a community preservation fund to do this. So basically, this will help in term of with affordable housing, to allow for a direct, you know, revenue source, stream that, you know, that is revenue neutral on the budget, basically, it's, it's not going to be taxed on the taxpayer. This is like, you know, you look at this, you said, okay, now, twenty-five percent of those community preservation fund go to this. And then you also looked at what they did have in, 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 in some areas that, you know, when you have developers coming in, you look at maybe a linkage in, in term of, you know, try and say, okay, well, you, you do this, and zoning board doing that too in case by cases, and even planning boards, that if you come to develop here, maybe you are to help us to, you know, beautify the area, sidewalk and whatnot. So those are some of the things, and also looking at fee as well. So I think this is a great idea going forward with the city, since we don't have, we're short of affordable housing or housing in general, this certainly help to, to help address some of this concern.
Thank you. Good motion. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Nine, three, Councillor Noon, request city manager provide an update regarding the explanation of the associate members of boards and commissions and what's being done to encourage residents to participate on these boards and commissions, seconded by Councillor Bersey. Councillor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, the motion actually speak for itself.
Thank you. Nine, four, Councillor Noon, request city manager work with Asian Task Force Against Domestic Violence to reconvene the Southeast Asian family against domestic violence in order to address aggravated assault and assault and battery issues, seconded by Councillor Samaras. Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were at the Highland neighborhood meeting, Councillor Chow and Councillor Drinkwater was there, and, and, and also State Rep Roddy Mom and Madam Manager and Chief and so many others, Captain was there, and one of, they did a report on the Highlands, the crime number of crime there. I'm just appalled to hear that, you know, there's a number of aggravated assault related domestic violence, and I know that recently the city of LoL through CDPG money give, I believe roughly between maybe three thousand dollars, maybe more, to the Asian Task Force Against Domestic Violence that, that's, and, and brother of Asian Shelter in Boston. And I know that years ago, when I was working at the DA office in the ninety, that I, I, I helped start what we call Salvation Asian Family Against Domestic Violence. We convene every month, and, and the member of that, you know, the group consists of police, probation, DCF, at the time it DSS, and the court people, probation, and the community to talking about this, and also going back on, on air, talking about how to, how, how to prevent this and how to not do it and so on. So hearing the accurate number of aggravated assault in the Highland, like, you know, I kind of think where that come from. So I thought, you know what, a meeting like this is important, given the COVID nineteen, everyone's inside, so, you know, opportunity to address this is, is a good thing, so. And maybe also invite Alternative House be part of this as well, because they, they are key player in, in the city with regard to domestic violence.
Sure, thank you. Any further discussion? Councillor Elliott?
So, just to the making of motion, so there once, or there once was a task force in place in the city of LoL that included all of those agencies that you talked about?
Yes, the tax, task force, at the time I was working for Tom Riley, the DA, I think that can come from Marion Ryan, DA Ryan office, the advocates there can call for this meeting, and, and, and I, I as the maker of the motion be more than happy to assist in term of re, reconvene this group if need be.
Yeah, I'd make that in the form of a motion. I did not know that. I think that makes sense, particularly in light of, you know, information that was, that was provided, so I think it's a good motion, I'll, I'll support it in any way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Nine, five, Councillor Rourke, request city manager have proper department draft the council vote, which allows for the current COVID outdoor dining shopping guidelines to become permanent seasonal ordinance, seconded by Councillor Noon. Councillor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think one of the pauses that has come out of this is how great the city has worked with our commercial businesses, that they have quickly allowed outdoor dining, seating, you know, sales, shopping, and things like that. And over the past couple of months, I've had, had one business complain, I'd be surprised if any one singular business in the city has complained about, because it's been such a great thing that has been done. And the way the city went about doing it, where, you know, Christine McCaw, Economic Development Director, was going to businesses, they had a mobile, you know, vehicle that would drive around and explain to businesses how things were done, and things were approved in a very fast manner that allowed businesses that were so destroyed by the pandemic to recover to some level of survival, right? So looking forward, I think it would be a good idea to keep this in place going, you know, for the next, you know, how many years? I think that the, the, the quick turnaround that is, is allowed, you know, before you had to go through some boards, commissions, you got kind of the council and things like that, but, you know, the trust that I have with Ms. McCaw and her department to talk to the business, to see what's allowable, you know, it goes through fire, it goes through police, and as long as those all approvals are all there, they can approve it and they can go from there. So I think it's a great thing that the city has done another example of it, and I hope going forward we can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, Councillor Chow, then Councillor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great motion. Any ideas that we can do to help the small business in the city is great. I know that when we talked about this back in May and June, just to streamline the application process and make things happen seamlessly, and that help a lot of small businesses without, without going through the red tape, any ideas, energy resource, little resource they had, they were able to provide the service as soon as stage two was allowed for them to have outside dining. I would also request an addition- Um, I would also request an addition, um, to what, uh, the motion maker said was also, you know, how the city can continue to help, uh, with the small business, because I know with the cold weather coming, even we have the, uh, outside dining, that might be, uh, difficult, uh, weather-wise, so, you know, what resources, uh, the city can do in addition to making the, uh, the permitting, the streamlining easier, that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Conway?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I was, uh, thinking on the same line as, uh, uh, Counselor Chow. And first of all, I, I, I applaud, uh, Counselor Rourke for putting this motion on. I think it's extremely important. The outdoor, um, outdoor, uh, eating, the restaurants are utilizing right now, which I think is a, is a great idea, and it's, uh, and it certainly is a way to, um, try to be, bring the business back. Now, I have noticed in different cities that they have these heating lamps. Is that something that, do we have to have, uh, do they have to have some type of, uh, permission to, to utilize those, or how would that work? Because I know that I've talked to a couple, uh, restaurant owners, again, in another city, and, and they intend to, they're allowed to have these heating lamps, and, uh, I, I don't know how long that can prolong, uh, their, uh, their business outside, but certainly I would think through the fall.
Yeah, we, we can find out if there's, I think it depends on what the source of the energy is for the heating, um, but we can get a report from the fire department. Uh, but the, the governor did, um, uh, introduce another round of funding, um, and one of the ideas behind it, uh, the Shared Streets Program, um, was to make available, um, funds for restaurants to purchase these heating lamps, but we'll, we'll find out, um, if there's any special permitting around it.
Yeah. Thank you. Good motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a good motion. Um, uh, if you may allow me to amend this motions to include, uh, this one thing we can help, uh, Counselor Conway brought up already, that, that we waive a permit fee. I think it's fire, uh, a fire, uh, you have to get a permit from the fire department, uh, to have that propane tank, tank out there. It's getting cold out there, so they need, they need heating. So maybe just one-time permit waiver, uh, to help those businesses that want to put the propane tank to heat up, uh, uh, you know, uh, going forward, um, during this, the, the winter. I, I guess is that one of the things we can help, uh, to offset, uh, the, the fee. Maybe just do it one, one, one time. Uh, I think that those are something that we can do as, 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 as a council, or as, as a city. A gesture, good, good gesture.
So, sure. Seconded by Counselor. All those in favor? Say aye. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question on this one. Madam Manager, do you know how long the barriers will be in place for? Has that been decided?
No, I believe the, initially, the extension was until November, and I, and then I believe they're going to extend it again, uh, the, the period of time. So, uh, winter poses other challenges, including plowing snow and, and the like, but, um, we'll, we'll let you know. Some communities are extending it into December first. The governor, I think, by his order, is also looking to extend it a little further, so people can, um, try and capitalize on as much outdoor time as possible.
Thank you. Uh, next motion of the night, Counselor Rourke. Request city manager instruct the law department to prepare an advisory opinion as to whether the city, through its city manager, can assume the powers of the duties of the school committee as set forth in Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven, and further prepare the necessary votes to evacuate, uh, evacuate such a change in the event it is permissible. We have four speakers, we'll let the-
Second, second.
Uh, seconded by Counselor Mercy. We'll let the four speakers go first.
Mike Dillon?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I wanted to speak tonight, um, because Counselor Rourke's motion, uh, it caught me by surprise, uh, to be honest. I didn't hear from anybody on the council leading up to the motion. No phone call, no communication, until I heard it on the news, um, and here we are. Um, and the communication between, um, you know, us as city officials is lacking, um, and COVID's not helping, it's exaggerating the problem. And, you know, the fear and isolation is just, you know, bringing out more anger in everybody. And, and, and we seem to be resorting to communication through text, um, email, and, you know, reading social media. And that's just, it's unhealthy, um, and it's unproductive. And, and that's all, I mean, that's dust. It has no substance, um, it does nothing but divide us. There's no substitute for in-person communication. That's how we're going to get things done. Um, and I feel, I mean, it's ironic, I'm here on Zoom, uh, talking about the importance of in-person communication. Um, so I, I guess my first, uh, suggestion is, um, I encourage the city council maybe to consider, uh, some sort of process for, um, in-person, um, speakers. I think it, I think it can be done within the guidelines, um, you know, and working with the health department, I think we can have one speaker in at a time. We, we do have speakers, um, I mean, at school committee meetings, we have like our own staff in to speak at times. So I think it can be done, and I think that's, that will go a long way. But probably more than that, I think we as, um, you know, as officials need to start speaking to each other, you know, like human beings, number one, um, and we need to get decision makers in the same room. You know, that's, um, you know, like I've said, that's, that's how you get things done. You know, we're not, we're not getting it, getting things done by, um, you know, listening to, you know, watching each other's meetings and, and, and communicating through email or texts, it just, it just doesn't work. So, you know, I'd like to propose that we start with a joint meeting. I, I would, I'd be happy to. I, you know, I can fill everybody in, and, and, you know, exactly where all of our issues are. I've been, I've, I've been very clear about, uh, about how things are going, and I, you know, I'd really be happy to talk about it. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, come on and let you get, let, let the council know that, um, and I would appreciate, um, if you'd consider it. So, thank you very much for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon.
Mary Ann Dumont?
Hi, good evening. Uh, Mary Ann Dumont, sixty-two Wynwood Road, Lowell, Mass. Uh, I would like to start off, uh, by first asking that rather than inquire of the law department whether the council can take over some of the legal authority of the school committee, perhaps the inquiry should instead be to ask the law department to define what are the current duties and responsibilities of the city council and the city manager in actually providing and sustaining the maintenance of our school buildings. Counselor Rourke wants to see the city takes, take charge of the buildings, but I was under the impression that the city already had charge of the buildings. Counselor Samaras stated last week that the issues involved in closing the schools last Thursday and Friday were not because of the absence of air purifiers, uh, even though that was of significant importance, but rather, and I quote, "because of the shape of the buildings and things like that." One hundred percent correct, Counselor Samaras. I applaud city manager Donahue, her team, and the council for the tremendous efforts they put forth to acquire funding from the MSBA's Accelerated Repair Program to respond to the critical infrastructure needs of our school buildings. The nine point five million dollars in funding received by the city will directly enable and improve the learning environment of our students. Boilers and roofs will be replaced in six schools. This year, the city had also applied for twenty-one projects at fourteen additional schools. Work has begun on the first six already approved schools. The fact that we have fourteen more schools in the pipeline for critical repairs is the strongest evidence we have that many of our schools are in serious disrepair. We are beyond fortunate to finally have city leadership who not only recognize the grave, grave need for repair, but also have committed to address it by taking the initiative to apply for these funds that have been available yet untapped for many years. All of this should indicate to every one of us that our school staff members who engaged in masked and socially distanced rallies before school committee meetings in the last four weeks are the very people who work in these buildings and who have suffered through and endured years of building deficiencies, and who actually had all the reason in the world to stand up and demand safe schools for our students and staff. The city manager herself stated, and I repeat, that the much-needed funding obtained will, will enable overdue repairs to the school buildings and improve learning environments for our students. We all want the same thing, safe schools and improved learning conditions for our students. Instead of threatening to usurp the duties of another city entity, why not work with them instead to help provide the supports needed to get this job done? We're not the enemy. It's wonderful to have concern and empathy for our families and students. Let's try to extend that same concern and empathy to the Lowell Public School staff, teachers, and parents who are going to great lengths to do their jobs under extremely difficult circumstances. Please consider that even with just twenty-five percent of students coming into our schools now, those who are there this week are working in temperatures between forty to fifty degrees with no running hot water. That's certainly not indicative of great learning environments. I would urge the city manager, the counselors, the superintendent, the mayor, and school committee members to visit a couple of schools one morning this week to get a bird's eye view of Lowell Public Schools' learning conditions. Just remember to wear your winter gear and gloves.
Make it in time.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this motion, and please, let's try to get together to help our schools become what they could and should be. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Monica Lundberg?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Monica Lundberg of Twelve Alyssa Drive. I'm a parent and school site council member of the STEM Academy and a member of the citywide family council. As Mr. Leahy can assure you, I have been a frequent and vocal critic of the school committee in the district this summer, particularly in regards to their handling of the preparation for remote learning for this school year. There have been numerous failures in communication, planning, and procedure. I am addressing this council tonight to state that I urge you to reject this motion. Are there issues that need to be addressed in our school system and in our school site, in our school committee? Yes, absolutely. We, as a community, have a long way to go before we can say we are giving all our kids education they deserve. However, a takeover of the school committee by the city council will not solve any of these problems. The city manager is only one person, one person who, I might add, already has a whole job of her own. It would be unreasonable and irresponsible to expect her to take on the task of an entire committee. It would also remove an important layer of citizen voice, as the city manager is in appointed position where the school committee is elected. It would also be unreasonable and irresponsible for this council to take on the responsibilities of the school committee, as you also have your own roles already. There is also the matter of trust. This motion makes the assumption that the city council will do a better job than the school committee, and that is an idea of which I am wholly unconvinced. Consider, one of the biggest issues before the school committee this summer has been the safety of the school buildings, as Ms. Dumont eloquently stated before me. A large part of the problems of the safety of these, of our school buildings is due to many years of deferred maintenance. Whose responsibility is it to provide the materials, the labor, the funds, the permits for that maintenance? Yours. It's this council's. There's a saying that I think is extraordinarily relevant here. Take the log out of your own eye before trying to take the speck out of your brother's. If this council would like to work on actually improving the situation for Lowell students, focus on the many things that are already in your purview. Get a timetable going to catch up on that school building maintenance. Revisit the idea of municipal high-speed internet, so that our students have access to classes and don't sound like robots when they try to answer the teacher's questions. Support and fund robust social services, so schools can focus on teaching instead of on meeting students' basic needs. Don't cut school funding. Vote no on this motion, and vote yes on Mr. Drinkwater's motion later this evening, number nine point eleven on the agenda, to work on solving the problem of childcare during a pandemic. In merely putting forth this motion, you've made your point to the school committee that you don't approve of the way they've handled things. Now move on and get back to your work, and let the school committee get to theirs. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Pellerito?
Hello, um, and thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Pellerito. I live at one forty-one John Street in Lowell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, and city manager Donahue. Um, while I believe there's no provision in state law that would allow a city manager to take over the duties of an elected school committee outside of what already exists, the, the mediated process of receivership, I still wanted to make several points in response to the motion, although in some ways I think the motion is moot, because it's not legal. Um, I moved to Massachusetts from Lansing, Michigan, about three and a half years ago, and after I had moved to Lansing, uh, the city council and the mayor approved a major overhaul of the city's piping, the sewer system. The house I lived in received a heavy-duty water purifier from the city and education about how to use it. Um, some of you might wonder where I'm going from this. It's actually about how my experience in Lansing with water was very different from that of Flint residents just fifty miles east. So what was the difference between Lansing, where we had great water, all of our pipes were replaced, we had water filters, and Flint, just east of us, why did I have safe water to drink, and a generation of kids down the road was poisoned? And the answer, of course, is emergency management, which is a system that allows an appointed official to supersede and replace a publicly elected body like a city council or a school board, school committee, and to overrule any collective bargaining agreements that were signed by both parties. We have elections because they keep officials accountable and transparent. Emergency management of, of the type that Counselor Rourke appears to be suggesting here is undemocratic, and as we've seen in Flint, it's dangerous for the health and safety of everyone who lives under the jurisdiction of an emergency manager. And just in case you think that water systems don't have anything to do with Lowell Public Schools, although I wonder how many of our teachers and students actually drink from the water fountains in our schools, um, let me give you another example from my home. Detroit Public Schools have been under an emergency manager since two thousand nine, and this is a person who is appointed by the governor who can make unilateral decisions without the approval of the school board. So the school board is elected, they still exist, but anything that they do and say can be overruled by, um, this person who's been put over them. And of course, our neighbors down the road in Lawrence also know a lot about disenfranchisement, since they're under our receivership as well. And even the former emergency manager of Detroit Public Schools, Robert Bob, acknowledged that the real problem there wasn't poor management on the part of the district or the school committee, it was chronic underfunding by the state. Uh, sounds very familiar in Lowell, right? And, and where did all of this end up? With seven students suing the district for depriving them of access to literacy, a case the state and district ended up having to settle for millions of dollars. The piece that I haven't mentioned in both of these cases, of course, is, um, the elephant that lives in this particular chamber, structural racism. The Detroit lawsuit was credited on the Fourteenth Amendment and charged that the decision, the decision to disenfranchise voters was- to disenfranchise voters was connected to the fact that Detroit's majority of students of color.
Monica. Can you hear me? Monica? Elizabeth.
Okay, I was muted. I'll keep going. When we look at emergency.
Can you hear me, Elizabeth? You just need to stay on point for the motion.
I'm on point. This is connected to structural racism in the sense that it is disenfranchisement of the voters of Lowell.
Well, we're talking about the motion and we just gotta stay on point, but your time's up. If you can just, are you all set?
I think I am. Thank you, city council. Thank you, mayor.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, that's it. Councilor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was gonna start with some comments, but, you know, more than one speaker, probably three of them, took some shots at the city and especially to our city manager. So I'll give Mayor Donahue a chance to respond to what the city has done over the past number of weeks with the DPW, the countless hours, the countless work that's being done there, the money that's being spent. I think the manager deserves a chance to respond.
Let me just respond briefly, as I have said a number of times, to this council. As a result of the pandemic, there have been specific guidelines provided to us as to what is being recommended to schools to, in and around the pandemic in making them safe. And that has to do with ventilation. That seems to be the issue that has been discussed a lot, certainly been discussed a lot by the U T L, and it's something that we have taken very seriously. And so, as I have said, we have pledged to comply with those guidelines that D E has recommended, and we have done that. We have spent to date on things relating to the ventilation in all of our schools this summer, over $800,000, and we are continuing to spend on that. That is an ongoing matter. We have had our personnel and contractors in the schools all summer. We hired a third-party firm of engineers to look at our schools, to look at the ventilation, to recommend to us what is the way we should optimize ventilation in the schools. We went to experts for that advice. We are following that advice, which has included repairing and replacing over 470 massive air vents on the roofs of all of our schools. It's included upgrading to the optimum level filters in our H V A C systems. It has included repairing and replacing ballasts and the like in our windows because that's been one of the number-one recommendations to open the windows, as we've been doing here tonight, to, in order to cut the efficacy of a virus being transmitted. And then finally, we agreed to purchase 1,000 air purifiers for each classroom to the tune of $400,000. So those are four redundancies, none of which are required but recommended, and air purifiers are not required but recommended, and we have done all of that. I defy you to find another community who has exceeded what we have accomplished in these past two months. So I take issue with the suggestion that the city has not done anything. We've done a lot, and we've done more than most communities in and around ventilation. Now, has there been other needs in the schools and the facilities? Yes, and we have been addressing those as best we can, and that's true of every community and every, especially gateway cities. But we are also, in addition to spending to date over $800,000 on ventilation issues this summer in our schools, we have also installed pursuant to the accelerated repair program nearly $14 million worth of improvements in six of our schools, and that's a brand-new H V A C systems, massive systems replacing in some of our largest schools, roofs on those buildings. And I would have brought the pictures because I went to look at them just to see what does $14 million buy you for these massive systems? And it's quite a lot of work that's been done. So when you couple all this together, nearly $15 million around ventilation and H V A C has been spent this summer in our schools. I just want the record to be clear on that.
Thank you, Councilor Rourke.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, and getting back, you know, to my motion and what I'm looking for, you know, no one's looking to get rid of the school committee, no one's looking to blow it up. You know, they still, they have a job to do with regards to our schools. It's not, you know, the manager just, you know, the manager does not run the police department, she does not run the fire department, you know, and you keep your superintendent in place, and you have a school committee that goes through policy and issues in the system as well. So to a couple of the speakers, you know, again, that, you know, spoke, maybe not knowing the intention of the motion, I hope that at least answers that section of it. What I am looking for, from the solicitor, from the law office, is to see if we can assume some of the responsibilities of the school committee. And not per se to do it to the school committee itself, Mr. Mayor, you know, I've said that, I respect the position of everybody that serves on the school committee. But when you look at it, as of right now, we are into school and there is no agreement in place for how our kids are gonna learn, whether in school or remote. Tell me another school district that that's going on in. It's not. You know, when we had our last speaker, let's talk about racism, okay? Let's talk about racism. You know, everybody knows what an achievement gap is, right? You know, an achievement gap is a persistent disparity of educational performance. It goes by gender, it goes by race, it goes by socioeconomic background, okay? That gap widened starting in March of last year in Lowell compared to other surrounding communities. It's only gonna get bigger because there's no agreement in place on how to teach our kids, and that's sinful. That's what it is. You know, going forward, you know, the biggest harm that's gonna be done to our city as a whole is gonna be our students that are trying to learn, that wanna learn, but are not learning right now. You know, and you wanna get into, you know, specifics about financial reasons, stability reasons, accountability, you know, we can do that when the motion comes back and go from there. But, Mr. Mayor, one thing I will ask of you to bring to the school committee tomorrow night is to put the manager in charge of negotiations, because this has been going on for months, and you're nowhere closer today, tonight, with school scheduled for tomorrow than you were, not you personally, but the administration, of where we are back then. And there's not, you know, nothing in place. Parents and kids up aside themselves, not being able to go to school, not being able to sit in front of a laptop and learning, is not happening. You know, two full days of advisory, kids with half schedules, it's irresponsible. You had months to get it done, and it hasn't been done. You know, you can have fancy answers, you ask a direct question, and, you know, you talk about, you know, the sun shining, the grass growing. There's no more parents and kids are looking for. They want direct answers, and you know what? They're not getting them. And I defy anybody to say they are. It's just not happening. The D E guidelines that were set forward by the state and by the governor, we're not following those. For some reason, the school administration wants to go above and beyond with purifiers and, you know, putting less kids that could go into schools than are available. The D E guidelines set forth, you could put many more kids into the schools. But you know what other problem is, Mr. Mayor? Is you can't have the staff to do it. You know, they hired 30 long-term subs just last week because they don't have the teachers willing to go in to teach their kids. And I've talked to teachers, they wanna go into work, they wanna do it, you know, there's pressure being put on them by the U T L administration, and that's where we're at. So we're gonna hire 30 more people with a budget deficit to go babysit our kids in school with no teaching going on, you're gonna remote learn from in the classroom. Okay? Think about the kids that go from the eighth grade to Lowell High. They are borderline students at best. They need to meet a teacher, a coach, a friend, a girlfriend, a boyfriend, a reason to go to school every day. They're not gonna get that. You will have a certain percentage of kids that will never step foot in Lowell High School because of what's being done to them right now. I have more confidence in our city manager and in this city council to get the job done than what's going on right now. That's the way I follow the motion, and again, you know, agree or disagree. My only concern, and I believe the manager's concern and the council's concern, is about our kids. If everybody had that same concern, put the kids first, we wouldn't be in this situation. But here we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mercer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, let me state that I have neither children nor grandchildren in the Lowell Public School System at this time. Thank you, dear Jesus. How, 'cause I wouldn't know what I would be doing. People have to work. I wouldn't know what I would be doing. However, I am more than angry. I am outraged and disappointed at the lack of accountability, direction, and oversight that has been displayed with regard to the opening of school. I have received calls from teachers, parents, as well as I talked to many students who have relayed the following to me. No class schedule, no class roster assigned, no specific class or assigned a class without a teacher, or not knowing who their teacher would be. Retired teachers who were scheduled to teach first period, but they can't because they retired. Children going to the songist arena to pick up a Chromebook for remote learning and was told that no laptop was assigned to them. One day, a mother of four is told that one of her children did not get chosen for in-person education this year by a lottery, so she made other plans. Then on another day, the same parent was told that her daughter had in fact been selected by the lottery for in-person education after she already made plans. How confusing is that? With no disrespect to the school custodians, I understand that they were allowed to take a month off. If this, in fact, is true, then whoever gave the order did not take the situation seriously and showed a lack of concern for parents and their children. But so much more could have been done, but instead classrooms were not ready. One parent told me that one teacher refused to go back to school for fear of getting COVID-19, but all summer long used her Facebook to show that she was at the beach partying with a large group of people indoors and enjoying outside activities with friends all the while without wearing a mask. How hypocritical is that? I'm not an expert on this issue, and nor do I say I'm right, but I would have allowed everyone to come back to school, and any parent that felt that their children should stay home should be able to do that as well, similar to what we have in the chambers here. We're all here, or some could have the choice to not be here, but we would be seeing them on the TV there. That should have been what happened at school. One teacher teaches a class, and those at home zoom into the same classroom. Next subject, the next teacher comes into the classroom. Teachers move, students stay put. I wholeheartedly feel the frustration of all the parents as well as the teachers, and this motion, I feel, will help that situation to a better degree. In my personal opinion, there is one reason the children are going back to school on Monday. It's because of this motion, not because of air purifiers. There are no air purifiers at hospitals, and yet they are open. Classrooms were not ready. H V A C units were not cleaned out and mold exists in them, and I hope that this issue was addressed. To change any of this, I believe the city solicitor needs to draw up a home rule petition, and if so, I will support it, contrary to what a person said that you can, I believe you can do it. Just because we have done it this way for years doesn't make it right, especially during this most critical times. I would not support eliminating a school committee. This motion is not about that. We need them to be there to develop policy. But one thing that has always baffled me for years is how the school committee can negotiate the teachers' contract. To me, this is a conflict of interest, similar to if the city council negotiated the contract of the police fire local 1705, et cetera. And this council does not do that, nor should we. The city manager's thoughts and feelings on the article in Sunday's paper by Rob Mills said it all, and I agree wholeheartedly with everything she said. Lastly, let us not forget the words of President Harry S. Truman in 1953 when he said, "The buck stops here." Although I am not a school committee member, the parents and their children are my constituents, and the buck stops here. Thank you.
Thank you. I just need a motion to go past 10 o'clock by Council Elliot Second, by Council Drinkwater. Roll call.
Yes.
Council Mercer.
Yes.
Council Moore.
Yes.
Council Smacks.
Yes.
Council Chubb.
Yes.
Council Collin.
Yes.
Council Preblew.
Yes.
Council R.
Next.
Who was next? Anybody else? Council Smarres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd like to go in two directions. The first, there's been criticism of the city council not addressing the issue of building maintenance. All I know is, seven years ago, when I first got on board the city council, we hired then city manager Kevin Murphy. The one thing I did ask was that net school spending be met, as other councils did. Net school spending was met, and he began the issue of dealing with buildings in need of repair. As my friend Pat Morgan would say, the next person who takes over the job should bring it to the next level. When the city manager, Donahue, came in, she has truly taken it to the next level. That's why I brought up the fact in her budget letter, she talked about not only meeting net school spending, but the idea that the constant need to ensure that the buildings are made safe, that the buildings are adequately taken care of, have been put down in writing and have been put as a major part of the budget capital improvement. So to say that this council hasn't thought, I mean, we're talking 30 years ago, perhaps, because there was a different time. When Proposition 2 and 1/2 came, it was save jobs and a lot of things were just cut out. And we've, and I guess we basically forgot how to renew and rebuild. But this council has been doing that, so there's no question about that. The issue, this motion can be seen as controversial or can be seen as a reason to create dialogue on how to better serve our students, the children of Lowell. There's been a great deal of emotion and concern over the cancellation that we had of the beginning of school. It created many problems for parents, many problems. I'm not gonna go into a debate as to what I said or how it was said, but there were many reasons, the reason, one reason was the idea that the air purifiers were not in. But as Councilor Mercy has stated, there are many other reasons why school had to be canceled. We can go on to that, we can debate that and debate that. It happened. Where are we gonna go from here? This pandemic is changing the world as we see it today. It's changing how businesses work, how hospitals work, how technology is changing. There are so many changes being affected. We need to review how we do things, how government works, if changes should take place. What this, the way I look at this motion, this motion is just talking about, let's take the opportunity to create dialogue, but let's create, let's look at how things are done, and should they change? Same old, same old will not continue to work. There's no question about that. And the one thing, the way I look at it, there's been a lot of finger-pointing, finger-pointing continues to happen. What this motion states is what it's gonna do, if this motion is passed, it's gonna really put, we'll say, the metal to the floor. It will certainly make us look at how we do things and the way we do it and how successful we are. But... floor. It will certainly make us look at how we do things and the way we do it and how successful we are. But the most important thing that has to be done here is the rebuilding of trust. I think what we have to see and make sure, our goal for all of us must be to ensure to the parents that they can send the children to the Lowell School System and that they will be reasonably safe and educated. For our students going to school, they should make sure that, we have to make sure that they feel safe, they're into a positive environment that will allow them to get a good education. Our teachers, our teachers must feel safe and know that they will have the tools and the training to do their job. And the principals, they need to know that they're going to get the support in their buildings, the building itself, and their curriculum. There are so many things. But the issue then becomes, where do we go from there? The idea of the school committee can, there are many ways of looking how we deal with this situation. But one of the things that I've been, you know, that has my thoughts, the idea of the budget, the budget, finance department. We have a finance department that has received kudos from all over the state. The school department has their finance department, but continues to expand. The idea of combining one finance department is an idea, saving a great deal of money. The idea of personnel, one personnel department, these are possibilities. I'm not saying this is the way it should be done, but it's an idea of doing something different. Because I'll go back to my statement of building trust. The students, the parents need to know the schools are safe, the students need to know they're going to get an education, the teachers have to know that they're going to be safe and be able to do their job along with the principals. That's your tool. Everything else is extraneous. So I think this motion should be supported because it will create dialogue. If we just say, "No, let's push this motion aside," we'll have one meeting, and that's it. This will create a change. Change needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Councilors and Mayors for going ahead of me. You mentioned many of the thoughts that I have thought about. You can look at this motion as controversial or not. I look at it as a solution as well. You know, first of all, let me say that I absolutely respect the school committee members. They have earned their elected positions to represent the families of the students and the school. But, you know, this is not a normal time. I don't think this motion is looking at, we're going to take over the school committee, all their powers and all their duties. We're not looking to abolish the school committee. But just this is a very difficult time. It's a very trying time. And when you have an unprecedented pandemic as this and where information is fluid and changed all the time, you know, I think we really need to communicate. The two governing bodies of the city need to communicate, especially when you have one issue, one singular issue, and that is the education of our kids, and that's not serving the kids of our city. Many statistics, many science, many data and studies have shown that studying in person to have the students physically in the classrooms are the best way for them to learn. And that's much more important and much more impactful in a gateway city like Lowell, when you have so many students of low income, many students of immigrant background, and as the motion maker said, the education level of somebody from the junior high to the high school, they're struggling. So we absolutely need the kids to be in the classroom and listening to many of the news the past few days, specifically to the state of Massachusetts. Many people, many experts, including the governor administration, really believe that the students should be in the class. Comes down to, the reason I support this motion is that when you have a situation where you could make decision one way or the other and not having prepared that how that would affect the families, the city council need to present ourselves, and we need to offer our help and assistance to the school committee. And, you know, if the decision was, they made like within, I think it's like less than 36 hours, to change the plans of the students from having in-class to 100% remote, that affected a lot of working families, and that caused a chaos. And I can see that the motion from Council Row, it is timely. It is right that for us try to step in to help out. And this is an exploration to see how the council body, to see how the city manager, administration can help out and try to get the students back to school in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Drinqua?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I respect the maker of the motion's care and concern for Lowell students and the passion for ensuring that kids are receiving a quality education. And same for all my colleagues here who have spoken on this issue as well. I do believe that that's where this motion comes from. That and a sense of frustration, and that's one I can understand and identify with very much. However, with respect to the approach taken by the motion, I come down in a different place. And the reason for that is I believe this very complex and critical moment in time calls for partnership and collaboration rather than assigning blame. And for anyone who criticizes the council as well, or any of the efforts that have been made in terms of our efforts in the schools this summer, I would say that that statement would apply to them as well. And just given the sensitive timing of this motion during a fluid situation where decisions are being made, I think there's really just no other way to view this approach than a direct rebuke against the elected members of the school committee, against the superintendent and members of the administration, his administration, and also against the United Teachers of Lowell. And while I think that questioning and criticism is absolutely fair game, I don't believe that the facts on the ground right now support such a direct rebuke against those parties in a pretty drastic governmental reform. I'm a parent of two children right now who are attending the Lowell Public Schools, and I have followed the district reopening plans and the discussions of the school committee extremely intently over the past several months. And perhaps the most impactful factor for me and my family has been the actual reopening plan taken by the administration and the school committee. And it happens to be one that I support and I think makes sense. It was an approach that didn't just carbon copy what many other districts are doing. The administration and the committee contemplated but ultimately did not adopt a hybrid model for what I thought were well-thought-out reasons. And, you know, the approach that was ultimately selected reflects the specific needs and realities of Lowell by prioritizing a return to full-time in-person learning for the students who need it most, while adopting the most stringent health and social distancing measures, and also by reaching the needed staffing levels with teachers who have volunteered to be in the buildings under their own accord. I think that's important. And for that, I actually believe that the school committee and the LPS administration deserve some credit. Now, you know, my children are young, they're in elementary school, first and third grade, where I believe that they would benefit the most from in-person learning. And both my wife and I felt comfortable with them attending school in person. Ultimately, they were not awarded seats through the lottery process, and they began school last week in full-time remote learning. And for kids like them who either opted for remote learning or did not obtain a seat in the lottery, investments were made in creating the best remote learning experience possible. Has it been perfect? Absolutely not. And, you know, showing me a district as large and with as many challenges as Lowell that hasn't had some issues. But speaking from my personal experience, with everything from the device and material distribution to troubleshooting technology issues that we had in my house to the level of engagement of the teachers with my kids for the length of a full school day on the computer for remote learning, I'm grateful for the experience I've had over the last week. And, you know, for the first four days of school, I've been with them for every second of remote learning. I'm at home, my wife has to work out of the house, so I've been there for every second of the beginning of the school year. And while I know I can't speak for all parents, and there have been some very tough experiences out there, as, you know, a parent, there's just nothing in my personal experience so far this school year that demonstrates the need, at least for such a radical shakeup. And as I see it, there really seem to be two overarching issues behind this. One is the decision to delay the start to in-person learning due to the late delivery of the air purifiers, and the other is the fact that we currently don't have a memorandum of understanding between the school committee and the UTL regarding changed working conditions due to the pandemic. I do want to briefly speak to both of those. Regarding the decision to delay the start date, I personally happen to believe that the superintendent made the right decision. For the past month and a half, we have been getting updated on, you know, the health and safety inside the buildings. All of those updates have included updates on the air purifiers. And while it was made clear that these were not a requirement, it was stated that because many of our mechanical ventilation systems are older, they can't accommodate the MERV-13 filters that are the highest standard. You know, it was stated we got information that the presence of air purifiers in the classroom would essentially equal the level of the MERV-13 filtration. You know, so we can debate the science of how effective they are all day long, and I don't claim to know that. But I do believe at this point, it was secondary to the fact that parents, you know, students and educators did make the decisions about whether to return to classrooms, possibly based on that information, that the purifiers would be there by the start of school. So either way, I respect the decision. Either way, I do personally feel that that was a reasonable choice. You know, fair to question whether they could have been made earlier or what the procurement process was, but I thought it was reasonable. The other issue that was cited is the lack of a memorandum of understanding. And, you know, I would just point to the fact that teachers are teaching. You know, I've seen this. The teachers who are teaching remotely, they're teaching for a full day. The teachers that would have been reporting for school had it started in person would have been there. And to my understanding is that they will all be doing so in person next week. My understanding of the bargaining situation is that there's agreement on a number of issues, most issues, and that teachers are teaching under those conditions right now. There are a few outstanding issues that have yet to be settled. But if you look at when many of these cities have reached their MOA, it's within the last couple of weeks. You know, Lawrence reached theirs, I think, five or six days ago. So, you know, I think what we have to look at is that, you know, there was talk about whether there was an impending job action. You know, that hasn't happened. Teachers are teaching, and, you know, the situation is not at impasse as far as any of us are aware, and things are progressing. And frankly, I think at this point in time, the only parties that really haven't criticized one another publicly throughout this are, I believe, the chief negotiators of the UTL and the chief negotiators for the school department. So I say, let them keep talking. We're hearing that they're close, and I do think that that is just going to be a more productive way to reach a MOA that is final than switching horses midstream. You know, because collective bargaining, it's not a zero-sum game. You know, it takes collaboration, and most importantly, it takes respect, which is crucial. So I really do believe that everybody here, both members of both elected bodies, the city council, the school committee, members of both administrations, all care about students. I would implore once again, let's work together, let's get through the extremely difficult and complex time. And if at the end of it, there are members of this council who feel that some sort of governmental restructure is necessary, I think that's fine. Let's take a sober look at it and engage in a meaningful debate. There's no one right or perfect way to do things. We can certainly look at ways to change it. But I do think making a change in the midst of a very, very fluid and complex situation just isn't the right way to go right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I certainly respect my colleagues' opinions and thoughts on this. I think that I have a unique perspective from the fact that I've taught for over 20 years and housemaster for over 15. I was a principal, also on the school committee for a number of years, eight years, and now here on the city council. So I have worn quite a few hats. And I will tell you, the most difficult job out of that group is being a teacher. There's no doubt about it. And, you know, what happens in that classroom is imperative. It's so important. And I've often said that I don't care what, whether you're superintendent of schools or a school committee person or anybody else, a principal, you're there for one reason, and that is to support what goes on in the classroom. And I think that this motion here that Council O'Rourke has put on, I think what it does do is it puts a spotlight on a problem that we've had. I know that a number of teachers and parents have called up. The frustration is absolutely incredible. I'm not going to repeat a lot of that has already been said. But it was, it's something that we've never experienced before. And I realize it's an extremely complicated situation. And I've often said that, you know, I look back at, which I've mentioned before on this council, I look back at one of my old history professors said to me, "You don't have to know all the answers. You just have to know where to get the answers." And I think one of the issues that we've had over the years that I have often brought out is that I've always heard it's the city side, it's the school side. In reality, it's, there's only one side, and that's working together. And I think that we've been fortunate, fortunate to have this city manager taking a look at what goes on in the schools. Again, I've been in those schools. I know what these teachers are talking about. The buildings have not been maintained. They have not been maintained like they should have been maintained. And I think that now all of a sudden, again, a spotlight is on it, and I think that people realize that they have been neglected. And again, I compliment, and I said it earlier today, that the city management and team are putting a full court press on to try to, to try to make these buildings a much safer place for our teachers and our staff. And I think that's so, it's so very important. And that's the only thing. We have to, I mean, as a parent, you want your children in a safe environment. As a teacher or a parent or anybody else that works in that, in those schools, you want to make sure that it's a safe environment for those individuals. And I tell you, I think that one thing that we have to do, and it has to be parallel, we can put money into things. We can put money into these buildings. But we also have to have, and we've talked about it on this floor numerous times, about having a PM system, a preventative maintenance program. We don't have it. We don't, if we do have it, maybe it's on the books, but it certainly isn't effective, and we can see that. And I think that's where we have to work together with the school department so that they have a preventative maintenance program when they're maintaining the buildings during the daytime, and that we are responsible for the overall maintenance of those buildings, and that we also have a preventative maintenance program, and both sides are talking to each other. Back months, back months ago, on this floor, I mentioned about the finances that we would get together on a regular basis with the school department so the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. We should be doing that not just with the finances, but with everything else. Because at the end of the day, I think everybody here obviously wants to have good buildings, good education, a safe, a safe environment for everyone. And again, I respect the frustration that Council O'Rourke has because, let me tell you, there are a lot of parents that had that frustration and still do. So to take a look at it and to get as much information as possible, I've always been a proponent of that. to get as much information as possible, I've always been a proponent of that, to put whatever you have on the table and let's take a look at it. But I am not in favor of changing and getting rid of the school committee or having an appointed committee. I'm not in favor of having the city manager all of a sudden heading up the school department. I think she has enough to do with this particular point. But again, a lot has been focused on the schools, and I think that's a good thing. It's frustrating right now. I get it. But if we take a look at the school side, what has come, which has come to me is the scheduling and the management information system. It really was poorly done. And I think that's something that has to, you have to, they have to do a better job. When you take a schedule, and teachers don't have a schedule a day or two days before, before school starts, that's unacceptable. That doesn't make any sense. And when somebody says, well, we don't know who's going to be in, at the building and who isn't going to be at the building and is going to do it by remote. It doesn't matter. You get the schedule, and then what you do is you mock off the ones that are going to be at home or vice versa. But to have the schedule, I don't, I don't get that. I really don't. Communication with parents, they were told one thing one day, all of a sudden they show up at the school, and guess what? It's been changed. They talked to the principal, the principal didn't even know anything about the change. So needless to say, and I don't want to get into all the weeds on it, but communication with parents and staff, and managing conflict. Needless to say, that's something that I think has to, has to take place and has to, we have to look at that. Planning, planning did not take place. I don't care what anybody says. You can stand up here, and you can talk, you can talk and talk and talk, but the fact is, effective planning did not take place. And I think that when they also, and I'm just going to, basically, I'm going to end it with this, professional development for the teachers in how to open up the schools. They didn't get the training for it. So again, I think that it's a great time to be pointing at each other, but the fact is, that's not going to really help. So I think that, which is mentioned here by a couple of counselors, we need to, we need to get together and make this thing work. It's as simple as that. And that means that we have to be communicating with each other. So I will support the motion to get the information and the information only at this point. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Elliott, did you want to speak?
Sure. It's, it's late. It's 10:30. We've, all the points have been made, quite frankly. I'm going to support the motion because something needs to be done. Sometimes dire times require desperate measures. And maybe this is one of them. We've all heard from parents, I don't have any children in the school system, but I do feel for those parents that do. You have husband and wives making decisions in the last minute of the moment. Well, who's going to work? Who's keeping their job? Who has to stay home and watch the children? I wouldn't say that's how we should be operating our school system. Madam Manager, you have kept the city council abreast of what has been taking place on a biweekly basis at every Zoom meeting that I can recall since the work started. So pointing fingers, we've held our end of the bargain. We put all hands on deck. We knew what the issues were in the, in the systems. We knew the HVAC problems. We've spent $800,000 on improving those. We've, we've spent another $400,000 on purifiers. We have, you've mentioned it. We have exceeded the requirements that many, if, I'm going to venture, most school districts have not. The dictate came down from Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you get an extra, it can open until September 17th, two, three weeks later, to ensure preparation. And, and we didn't, and we failed. We failed the families and the kids that should be benefiting from it. So the time to assign blame, we move on. People have enough anxiety in their lives with COVID, with everything else that they have to deal with, you know, how are we going to, do we have to meet? I want the people that are going to do the job to get on the same page. We can have meetings with city councilors and school committee people. I don't object to it, but we hire people to do the job. And that's what I want to see done. So the delay was unacceptable. And then the logistical issues that we hear of time and time again that continue is unacceptable. How is this going to be straightened out? You know, anybody can be a money-wanted quarterback. The logistical issues of the method that was selected. Look, we just learned tonight, they don't even know if there are enough buses for these children who could be going to school. When's that going to be resolved? The people that are in charge need to, need to address it. And when residents and parents feel their government has failed, you know, it is, it's a call to arms. And I couldn't agree more with Counselor Mercier. The buck stops here, and I think that's what this motion is about. And that's our message. If we, whatever we have to do to ensure the safety of the teachers and the students, I believe that we have exceeded those expectations. Whatever we have to do to ensure, education is, is a paramount interest to parents. We're all parents. That's the most important thing. Second, their health and safety. So no easy answers are not going to solve them tonight. But whatever it's going to take to get those students in the classrooms and the teachers safe, and parents' anxiety is, goes away. And it's not going to be easy, and it's going to be a struggle. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with my fellow counselor that it is not fair to say that this city manager and this administration have not done enough. Because of this administration, this city manager, we went to MSBA to get the accelerator, acceleration grant, over $9 million to repair a lot of those buildings, a lot of school buildings. There's more need to be repaired because there has been year, maybe decade of neglect, no question, but cannot point finger this direction, your direction, Madam Manager. And with this council too, is that with regard to school funding, I've met the net school spending. So that's not fair. I understand with regard to school opening, you know, everyone is frustrated. I too frustrate because I have a kid in the Lowell Public School. This is not a noble year by all means. This pandemic has caused us to change our way of teach, how we teach our kids. There's no model to work from. Look around, there's no model. It's not unique to Lowell. Every city and town, in this state and in this country. This is like putting a puzzle, a giant puzzle, right? There's no picture. And with pieces that keep changing all the time. But you know what? This city, this administration, city manager, DPW, land buildings, and the school district themselves, everyone working very hard to make this work. Is it perfect? No. It's a lot of work to be done. And we all in this together because it's for the children. So what I do urge is that we continue to collaborate. I also urge that we need to be patient, more patient, and trust, again, that we all in this together for the best interests of our kid. That's why I can't support the motion even just going to get the information. And I also know that this is a long process. Put it out there, it's kind of like, you know, it's kind of like hurting the communication, hurting the collaboration. Because at the end of the day, we can't do this. I heard some of, from some of my councilor already, that we don't want to, you know, take over the school. We don't want to rid off the school committee. It is a school committee responsibility. And that's why we need to continue to collaborate with them to make this work. I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'll just, I'm not going to support the motion. Everybody made good points on both sides. It's the school committee's responsibility to handle this, to finish what they started. And the way the motion reads, I'm not sure, Counselor Conway, it does ask for recommendation at the end, so it's not just information. But being on both sides, school committee and council, I, it's very frustrating to sit on the school committee's side and sit in those negotiations, even though I can't do UTL. You might as well sit in a room by yourself and stare at a wall and talk to yourself for four hours. That's what it's like. They drag it on, drag it on. And adults, the UTL needs to come together with the superintendent and the school committee and figure this out very fast. And they can't keep dragging this out. I've been honest with the superintendent. It's been a horrible start. We should have done a lot of things differently, but I just can't support this at the time. So. If we, any other comments before roll call? Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make the following comment. And it is late, so I'll be brief. But I just want this council to know, I work for you. And in that sense, we have tried to give you full reports as often as we can, especially around this, this issue. I also want you to know that I've worked with the superintendent very closely. We've communicated on a regular basis. The, and I continue to, and I echo the sentiment that we have to work together because when all is done, it's the kids of this city that shouldn't be paying the price for what's happening here. We can't have a house divided, and that's the problem. The finger pointing right now, when we have one group working in the building trying to do their work, and another group working in the buildings, and now all of a sudden there's a civil war and finger pointing, that can't go on. It just can't go on. And, you know, it's, it's unnecessary, it's destructive, and we have to stop that. We have to have everybody pulling the oar in the same direction. We've got to be rowing in the same direction if we're going to have any success here. And so it is going to take constant collaboration and communication and just, you know, in whatever the council decides. But in the meantime, I just want you to know, I'm going to keep doing my job. I'm going to keep collaborating. I spoke to the superintendent. He, it has the same sentiment. But we have to make sure everybody is on the same page going forward on all, on all levels. It's not just building maintenance. It's, it's a lot of issues that we all need to come together. So I just wanted to say that.
I just wanted to add that I don't think it's, you know, building maintenance, you, your administration has gone above and beyond. It's not that. It's, it's the school department has to get its act together educationally wise, resolve the MOU, get the teachers back in, get on board educational wise. That's the big holdup. The buildings are fine. The buildings are better than they've ever been. This council under your administration has done tremendous work. It's, it's unacceptable that schedules, kids weren't accepted at proper time, all that stuff. So we've already gone over that, but that's the main issue right now. Get the kids back in the classroom and get them work, get them.
Move the question. Roll call.
Mayor Lahey?
No.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
No.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
No.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Six yeas.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move if there's no objection to the remaining motions. I don't have to speak on mine. Mine are pretty much self-explanatory, that motions are referred to the city manager. Or if councilors want, they can carry them over to the next meeting.
Counselor Conway? Counselor Drinkwater? So motion to accept all these and send them out for?
Elliott, seconded by you.
Seconded by Counselor Mercier. Any announcements?
Motion to adjourn. Counselor Elliott, Counselor Rourke.
Time you got.